It used to be called that, so it's easier to not move the paths.
I'll give the men in here, see if they can get Carter online.
Good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, I'll plug it if you can.
Which one is it?
I don't know.
Which court? Oh, it's that style?
That's this one right here.
Yeah, probably.
It switched to my computer screen.
Oh, sorry.
All right, Carter, can you hear us? Again.
All right. It is after eight o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order and we can stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have anybody here for public discussion? If there are none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda minutes. Everybody had a chance to look it over?
So moved.
Moved by Stecker, second by pause. All those in favor? Hi. Any opposed? Unanimous decision, motion carried. All right, next up, we have the update from the secondary road foreman.
Morning.
Morning.
Any highlights you want to give us? Anything?
This is kind of your opportunity, if you have. The board would like to ask any questions, I don't know if there's any trainees right now that.
Been pretty fortunate, we haven't had any of these snowfall yet, so.
We have, been fortunate.
You guys have anything else?
I don't know.
All right.
Do you guys have any concerns or questions or anything?
We do.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks guys.
Thanks for coming in.
Stay warm.
Morning, Mark.
Morning.
All right.
I don't know what I did know.
Well, during that, during that time is when you kind of just bring up any concerns, if anybody has concerns about roads or anything like that.
Yeah.
Sort of pothole going on or anything like that, that would be like a good time to kind of chat and tell me about it. All right, next up, we have our monthly report from Cassuth Regional.
Hi, for those who who don't know me, I'm Colette McConnell, I'm the CFO at Cassuth, so just sharing an update. So the one big, 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 big change that happened at the end of the year is that we are now out of network with Humana Medicare Advantage. I think I talked about that some when I came in November, that we were on, 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 on the brink on what we would do with that or not, so. We are out of net, network with them and Aetna Medicare Advantage as well, so we are still in network with several other plans for our pay, for our patients to choose from, and so we're able to get most switched over, so. Really busy month, in the month of December, our average in pay, in patient's census was five through the month of November and for the month of December, it was at eight, so. Doesn't seem like a huge jump, but it, it, but it, it really is a big jump for all of our staff, and our ER had their busiest month of the year in December as, as well. That's kind of the, the norm for the month of December, I mean, I think we're all sick during that time too, so. Just working on bu- bu- budget timings similar to you, so, so, so just starting to work through that and work through all the plans for some, some of our larger equipment that will need to purchase in the next year. Let's see, what else did I have? One question that our public health administrator had asked is if it's known who the board of health supervisor will, will be.
I think it's Tower.
Tower, great. You were voluntold, maybe that's why it was, but I will let Lindsay know that. Any questions for, for me at all? And I think Heather had reached out, I think we plan to come quarterly now.
Okay.
Just to give a more broader update when we come, so.
Okay, okay, sounds good, all right, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, we have discussion decision, approve the hiring of Sanitarin applicant. Did you get a chance to reach out and get a response?
Yeah, we did get a request to postpone this a week by the individual that we contacted, so if everyone's okay with that, we'll just put it on next week's agenda.
Do we need a motion for that, or, okay. All right, we will postpone that to next week.
Want to get Doug?
Yeah.
Say, the applicant requested that.
Yep.
Sure, sounds good, all right, thanks. All right, so he is busy at the moment, he said he needs about ten or fifteen minutes, so with that, I guess we could move on to Tami.
Okay. So, I did get a letter in the mail from the city of Titanca advising that they are having, they're requesting property be rezoned from residential to commercial in two hundred feet of a lot owned by Post Property LLC located at 124 First Avenue Northeast in Titanca, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Doug, see if he got a copy of that, but I'll pass this down, so you guys can see that as well. And then I need to talk to Doug about that too, and see if he's aware of that. Next week's agenda, we have approval of a liquor license, discussion for the animal organs and the solar ordinance. You guys also will have Assessor Conference Board's meeting at seven o'clock next Tuesday, if you wish to attend that. Here in this room, yeah. We should, we're a part of that. Yeah. Yes. All of us are.
That should be on our agenda.
I have it, okay.
Yeah, we all are.
Yeah. You just have one vote.
We need at least three of us here to have a form of board.
Everyone got the email for that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
And then we'll discuss. We'll discuss more budgets after we finish today to figure out what we want to schedule next, so we'll continue with that discussion as the day goes on, and I think that's all I have.
All right. Next up, we have board discussion and committee reports, Howard, do you have any?
Nothing that I'm aware of, nothing I attended anyway.
Amber?
I just had an orientation with early childhood in North Central Iowa, and, you know, that went very well with Selena, and she updated me on when our meetings are and what my role is, and I guess I'm on the finance committee for that, and I just look forward to it, but that's it.
All right, Kyle?
There is ISAC new officer school, Wednesday, Thursday, are you two going to that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Oh, sorry, I didn't remind you of that, sorry, but you guys are both signed up for that.
Yep, yep, yep.
I just mentioned that because I have it on my calendar. I don't think I had any other committee reports, but we have been dealing with this lawsuit or petition for C I J D C that I had mentioned to the board about, which would be different before the end of the year. It's basically a petition trying to figure out who the actual owners are of the operation with the other counties, because it sounds very, there's debate on whether documents were filed properly or whether things were done correctly at this.
What are we talking about?
C I J D C is central area junior attention center.
Oh, I remember you talking about that.
And we have a meeting coming up on the twenty fourth, but our director had sent out proposed changes to the twenty and all that stuff here previously this month, but from the sounds of it, I don't think we will be acting on any changes based on several pieces of information there, so just a little bit of an update, that's kind of a work in progress, but I think we'll kind of be in a holding pattern for a little while there until some of this gets sorted out.
Did you see the email I forwarded to you?
Yeah.
Do I need to do anything with that, or I just holding till I hear?
Do we have anything, then probably not.
Don't, don't respond, or respond that we don't have anything?
Either way.
Okay.
I don't know that it makes a whole lot of difference if we don't have the material, if we don't have them, but.
Okay, I'll just let him know that we don't have them.
Yeah, that's fine.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
Can I ask a quick question that I forgot to mention, so thirtieth, January thirtieth is the statewide supervisors meeting. I have a conflict right now, how important is it that I clear that conflict? I'm not saying it isn't important to go to that, but it will be kind of difficult for me to redo, but I will.
Up to you, I mean, I'd say it's a good one, but I know that not everybody makes it to that, and I mean, if you don't get to it the first time, it's probably not the end of the world.
Do they, do they record those, where she could watch it later?
No, I, I don't think ISAC has any of that stuff, like some of my stuff with NABO, they have recordings available and you can go back if you miss it, but that's much bigger platform and stuff too, I don't think ISAC has any of that available electronically.
Sometimes they'll open it up in a while for like, if they've got presentations they give, they'll share that with you, but you won't get them, you know, actually presenting.
Yeah, sometimes, sometimes that you have access to like the PowerPoint presentations or something like that.
Okay. Okay.
But.
Amber, do you have Tami Norman's email address?
I do.
I'd reach out to her and let her know and see if she can get you anything, she's really good about that.
Oh, yeah, she's super.
Yeah, yeah, so she might be able to help you if you can't go.
Okay, sounds good.
Great project?
Yeah, that was, that was.
Just the one day. That one is a one day deal. Yeah, that's the Embassy Suites. I think it does again this year.
Yeah, I went to that one a couple of years ago, it was, it was pretty good, that's good information, I crammed it one day.
And a lot of it's just talking to other people.
Yeah, yeah, the conversations.
You can't see that on any agenda or whatever, but that's, I think, most of the people that go there say that's the most valuable part.
It's networking.
Yeah.
And having those people you can call, be like, oh, what are we doing here, and you get someone that's ninety-nine percent of the time got unbiased opinion.
Yeah.
It's been helpful for me.
Okay.
All right, I guess it's me, so I did have two meetings last week and a meeting last night, the two last week, I had the North, I always get it wrong, North Central Regional Emergency Response Commission, which is the hazmat team, kind of met and just discussed some upcoming trainings and different issues with like certificates and stuff, the, I can't remember his last name, his first name's Aaron, he's the fire chief over there, he's actually started in LLC to be able to do certificates for training and stuff, because they were having issues with NIAC not getting back to them. Other than that, we went through the budget, we're currently sitting pretty well, I would say we're above the fifty percent remaining, so. Sitting pretty good budget wise for hazmat. Then following that, we had our transportation policy board meeting, basically just kind of went over the numbers of what's available for projects, they are scaling that back for the next couple of years, grant dollars for that, so they're trying to do some catch up, I guess, with that, because they don't want people having too much money sitting out there, I can't remember exactly all the details of that, and I won't bore you with the numbers. One good thing that we did hear from the Iowa DOT representative there is they are going to be starting this spring on Highway eighteen between Algonah and Sexton, they're going to actually be converting that to a Super Two. So in the spring, they're going to be.
That's been in the, that's been in the works.
It, yep, it's been in the works, but they're officially starting this spring, so, so it'll be, be nice to have that stretch of road smoothed out. And then last night, we had our NIACog meeting. It was a short meeting, because the guest speaker that we had originally scheduled was sick and couldn't make it, so basically with that, we just kind of went over some of the numbers, I'm trying to find my sheet here. So I don't know if they've gotten you the, the new assessments for the dues and stuff yet, but they did say last night that the, the membership dues assessments have increased, which they do every year. For NIACog, they've went up to.
Yeah, she sends that to me every December, so.
Okay, okay, so it went up a dollar two per capita from the ninety-nine, the hazmat went up from, actually, I think it stayed the same, because that's based on their budget, and their budget could change this year, so that's eighty-two cents per capita. And the transportation policy, I believe, went up to two oh two, I can't remember what that was, before two dollars and two cents per capita, so. Other than that, they just kind of gave financial reports and discussed, there's an upcoming North Iowa housing conference, that's going to be in Mason City coming April twenty-four. It's supposedly going to be a pretty big conference dealing with the housing and stuff like that in North Iowa, their discussion, you know, utilizing economic development, utilizing, getting grants, home improvement and stuff, as well as, you know, building new homes and things, so it's a wide range of, of discussions. Had there, so, so it's like it'll be a good one. So that was it for meetings, I did get a call from Linda over at Cassuth Economic Development, they did request that I be on the revolving loan fund, I wasn't sure if she'd reached out to you on that.
She did, yes, she did. She did reach out and said that you, that they would like a different person, they'd like to have as many board members as possible involved, so, and that you had accepted, so. That is not one that they want reappointed every year, that's one that they want you to be on as long as, as long as you're a board member, so I did make a note of that, so I don't put that on the January first meeting for changes, so.
As long as. Sure. And then as far as the NIACog sheet for the appointments, we have under there that the economic development, that we need an economic development person to serve that. It doesn't actually have to be an economic development person.
Yeah, that's the one we were going to ask Todd Ferris, and I have not gotten a response back from him yet.
Okay, okay, so they said it doesn't have to be someone in that position, it's just essentially a non-elected official that has some knowledge of economic development to sit on that, so. It, that, you know, opens up the door to some other possibilities if Todd does not want to, you know, be on that. And that's, I think all I had. Next on the agenda is budget workshops.
We can't start those till eight thirty.
Till eight thirty, okay, so.
I did have, I did have wellness.
I forgot, Carter was off.
Last Wednesday, oh, no worries, I had wellness last Wednesday, and we've got the suit potluck planned for February fifth, that's a Wednesday, and Donna should be sending out something about that, but. Other than that, had a, wife and I had a baby over the weekend, that's our news.
Congratulations, Carter.
Yay.
That's it.
All right.
Five minute break.
Five minute break.
Yep.
Unless Doug comes up soon, so. All right.
Morris, what do you know this morning? It's cold.
Tami, I was going to ask you.
That's good news?
Yes, it is good news.
Yeah.
Just Friday, so he sent a picture this morning.
Did he?
And said.
Well, ours was closed forever, like we just had, we just literally played on the highway because there was no one there.
So we get a summer support.
Good news.
Yes, very good, yes, yes. I know last week, last Tuesday, she was having some livers, so like it was a pain, I was wondering just in case she'd go on the liver.
Is there something?
I know he said he did, and he was talking about it, and I was wondering if he'd be looking out.
So like. So they're the ones that are supposed to be responsible for.
Yeah, because Doug's busy, so when he's on the clock.
Oh, that's like a fifth of it.
Yeah, he's on the clock, so when he's reading that he's going to come.
Oh, right. And then you did some, it looks like you're talking about the animal organs or the.
No, they, they decided last week to postpone anything, that wasn't a issue, so they were going to manage it more, so.
So it's next.
Next week, yeah, thanks. Hi, I don't have my coffee, how about you?
Well, I don't know, I hate to be outside and I'm sitting in the water.
Yeah. Which case?
I was trying to bed the animals down, so.
Um.
Everyone's okay, so.
Five or six probably.
They're cool.
All with the same individual?
It helps when there's, I almost said there's no wind, because there's like.
There's no.
And the sun is out.
That's the problem, I mean, we talked about some of the cases, because last year we talked about like, like the assessments and stuff, but.
Yeah, with no snow around.
No, I'm sorry, because there's snow, like.
Looking back on it now, we've got all these cases, I originally told you the district don't know what's going on.
Get up early, plug in the skid loader, and then like.
So we're trying to do better.
Fast, it can take longer.
Yeah.
And like if people clear it all, then the wind blows, which blows all the time, and then it's shut, and you can't get in, like you can't get in, like you can get out, but you can't get in.
Well, we, we need to.
You're shut, and you can't get in. Like you can get out, but you can't get in. That we get the drifts, and then the clouds come. And I used to work in Fort Dix.
If we could just snap our fingers.
Well, it's just if it refreezes, you can't surf through it like the dukes of hazard, if it doesn't, you know, if it doesn't refreeze, you can kind of blow through it.
To stop the wind.
Was it that Kool-Aid guy blows through the wall? But if it's frozen, you're just going to rip your hair out, so I'm really happy with.
Well, maybe we can get ratings now, like spring.
I wish I had to get in. I don't know, but every time we get one, we just record them, but then it just piles some more.
First time ever. Oh, yeah. And we're going to. A few, like a few, like one inch snows and then a warm. I would like that, one inch snows and then warm days, then warm days, followed by warm days. But if it's really warm.
Somebody just.
That's true, that, that would be better. I also want wildfires in March. We had a city one year. It didn't, it didn't smell at all, it got really warm, and then like fires.
What's that?
I said it wasn't good morning, it was cold out there.
Oh, it was cold this morning, yes, it was. But.
Oh, they're funny, that. Some were fun? Some more fun?
Uh, going up to Orkville and soda. Big storm this way.
Yeah?
Same between Minnesota and South Dakota.
Yeah? They've been catching? Or you're just on a mission?
Well, we booked it, so.
Oh.
We'll see what happens.
House or hut?
Yeah.
Oh. Man, you're so mad at him.
Like one time I hope it happened.
How many days?
Two nights. Wednesday, Thursday night, come back.
Hey, how's your calendar working, Trey?
Wonder, wonderful. That was close. Um, we really liked this one, so thank you for putting that up for us.
There's that resolution.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
Though if she's not having to look all the way over there, she can just turn.
I can look here.
Did she tell you the story, Josh?
No, that that doesn't need to be repeated.
She goes, hey, can you hang a new calendar? We haven't got the twenty-twenty-fives. And I said, are you sure? And she goes, yeah, I haven't seen them anywhere.
I just got this one.
I came up here and picked that one up and turned it over and hung it back up. Oh, that's why I didn't see them.
I didn't know. I mean, I probably did know that, but I'd forgotten that it was two-sided.
Two-year cycles.
Yeah.
We'll get some next year.
Oh, good. When I ask that question next year, we're good.
You're good. I wasn't, I wasn't in your eye. Are we ready to continue on? All right, we're gonna circle back here to Doug. You got the resolution for adding Christmas Eve to the secondary road.
Yeah, I apologize. I had some people I was visiting with there in my office, so I haven't wanted to continue that conversation. Spoke a little bit about this last week, but the secondary road department is a collective bargaining unit. And in their agreement with Casoot County, they have ten holidays listed. The board supervisors, the department heads requested the Christmas Eve holiday, and the board granted that. So I was just asking that the secondary road department be treated the same and be granting a holiday on Christmas Eve as well. So this resolution goes through that, and then it determines or therefore be a resolve that the board supervisors grant the day before Christmas, December twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, be added to the eligible paid holidays for regular full-time Casoot County secondary road employees for the calendar year twenty-twenty-five.
All right, any questions for Doug on that?
And it has to be the day before, it's not a choice or anything?
No, it would be just like what the resolution or the approved holiday list. It'd be the twenty-fourth of December, twenty-twenty-five, that day.
Yeah, all their holidays match what the courthouse holidays are, except for that one. So then last year, we we did the same thing, since we added.
That's not exactly true, Josh. Martin Luther King Holiday, which is Monday, the courthouse will be closed, but the road department will be working that day. The road department receives an eight-hour floating holiday for that. So they, there are opportunities in June where it for snow, obviously. And that was something that was negotiated between the secondary road collective bargaining unit and the board supervisors many years ago. So they receive eight hours of floating holiday to be taken, taken whenever they please, but they do work at regular time on Martin Luther King.
Any other questions?
You you did this last year, and it was new last year or the year before? You've been doing it every year, just addressing it as a?
Last year was the first year that the full day was given. It was not uncommon for Hapity to happen, which always put a little bit of a bind on my shoulders as far as if it was snowing, the road department would work, and eight hours was a regular day. If it was not snowing, I made a decision whether or not to determine that they would leave and count it as a holiday. So I I always had to interpret that. However, last year I asked the board to make it clear for me, so. It am clear for the road department.
I guess my my only comment would be experiences. Once you do it, note it once, it's always nice. Once you do it twice, it's almost, it's a given. It starts to be a given and unexpected. I'm not saying not, I'm against it because I think very little gets done on the twenty-fourth of December, unless it was snowing anyway, you know, if there was something definitive to be done. Anyway, I'm not against it. I was asking.
Is we would need a motion. And the resolution number is zero-one, one-four, two-five, zero-one. We've got a motion.
So moved.
And seconded by Carter. And for the discussion. Hearing none, we'll do a real call vote.
Haas.
Yes.
Garvin.
Yes.
Stucker.
Yes.
Flackter.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All right, motion passed by zero. Next up, we have construction in the right way.
All right, thank you. Uh, there's one request for construction in the right way. It's from Interstate Power and Light. Spirit Lake, they would like to remove some overhead power poles. This would be on three-hundred-and-forty Street and three-hundred-and-thirty Street and one-hundred-and-forty Avenue. There is a location map there. I I would recommend that the board would approve of these. We would be out working with them identifying tile locations. There has been a a new tile placed in there. I think that we have a pretty good idea where it is at. That some of these crossings will be going under, and there's others that may not, may not be right, ready to find, but we'll locate those.
So they're replacing overhead with underground?
That is correct.
Have they communicated with those residences there yet, do you know?
Uh, this is in the road right away. I'm not sure if they have communicated with any landowners at all, but.
I would hope they would before they do work into residences, but.
Would you not require any kind of a situation? This is the board supervisors approving road work in the road right away. Excuse me, utility work within the road right away.
All right, we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Haas, seconded by Garvin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
You can have your signature right there, Josh.
Next up, we get discussion with engineering zoning administrator.
Uh, yeah, we continue to work with FEMA as far as getting paperwork submitted to them for the disaster. I had a chance to visit with some landowners on that possible road, half-mile road, which would be one-hundred-and-forty Avenue between three-sixty and three-sixty-five Street. Those owners did not, didn't, were not willing to sell the road right away.
Under any circumstances, or what?
Yes, I'll put it at that, and if you need more, I'll certainly go into more details, but not at this meeting with the recorder on. Uh, we continue to have open positions. Laverne, we're interviewing. Uh, we we have an open position at the transfer station. We'll be advertising for that the end of this week. And then for planning and zoning, I have had a email request to visit. They want me to call them back. I called them back yesterday. They have not returned their phone call, but it'd be a battery storage system in Casoot County. So right now, I would answer that, that it would be some sort of a conditional use permit. I don't believe our our ordinance addresses battery storage at all.
Is that conjecture like with wind power?
That is correct, yes. It would be something that.
Doesn't matter with.
No, but in this case, it was with wind power. Not new wind power, but existing.
All right, anything else for us?
Uh, no idea.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, sir.
All right, next we will move into budget projects. First up, we've got custodian. Morning.
Morning.
Oh my gosh, I just wrote one fourteen oh five.
Close.
Only twenty years on.
Twenty years on. I noticed we don't have that switch flipped.
Thank you. That's why I flip it right in the morning when I come in, because I don't forget. This morning, I didn't even remember that.
Brain freeze?
Yeah.
Literally, with how cold it is.
Yeah. Okay, so in this budget, Will and I work on this together. It's pretty self-explanatory. The wages, four percent increase, like you guys have asked. Really not much for changes. I don't actually think we changed much of anything.
Thought we added like, then we had five hundred or something close.
Five hundred, maybe. Two fifty, I think. It looks like two fifty to uniforms and apparel. But that's it. Otherwise, it's pretty much.
Was there a reason we added that to that one?
Yeah.
In particular?
Of course, yeah, the cost of everything has gone up. They have special pants they wear that are fire retardant and.
Flash resistant.
Yeah, when they're working with the boilers and the stuff in the furnace room, so they're not cheap.
Boots, do you buy boots?
Seventeen.
Yeah. And we can, just out of curiosity, from two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four, there was like an increase of, it looks like about sixty thousand dollars. Was there something in particular that made that increase? Or maybe it wasn't. I'm just looking at the used. Maybe it was budgeted that much. Twenty-two, twenty-three, we used two twenty-three, and then we budgeted two eighty-seven, but I don't have to budget it. Was there anything in particular that went up quite a bit for most two years?
Wager, whatever, piece of that.
Twenty-three to.
Yeah.
Substantial piece.
So we just went from twenty-two, twenty-three to one thirty-five, fifty-five to now one eighty-one.
Oh, okay. I should look at the individual lineups. I was just looking at the bottom.
Yeah, yeah, so that was.
Top line, yeah, it would have been one thirty in twenty-two and twenty-three fiscal years, and then.
Okay.
One seventy-four for the current, and then one eighty-one for next.
Okay. Okay, I was just, I was just curious.
So is that body, or is that a large increase in what the compensation was?
We did have an increase with the, when the payroll system changed.
It would have been the wage scale changes, yeah.
Yep. All right, anything else for discussion on that? I guess we'll move right into auditor slash courthouse slash elections.
I'll have Will state for that, because he does the maintenance in the courthouse. So if we want to start with auditor, that would be great.
You want, you said you wanted to start with auditor?
Yes, please, that's okay.
Okay.
Oh, I guess we can, since Will's here. That would make sense, wouldn't it?
That's what I thought you were trying to say.
Yeah, that would make sense if I did it that way. Sorry. Yes, let's start with courthouse. Sorry, Will.
I'm just here.
He's got his coffee. He's not.
Yeah. It's a slow morning. Sorry for that. Um, so again, here, not a lot. Postage, postage is going up, and we seem to be using a lot more postage these days. So that has gone up five thousand. Otherwise, of course, ICAP Insurance, they're expecting about ten percent. So I did make that change. That's on the second page.
Yeah, it was thirty percent increased last year.
Yeah, yeah, and about a ten this year is what they're recommending, so. It's a lot, lot of money, but those are the only real changes on that budget.
Yeah, we went from four fifty to six hundred, so.
Yeah, I knew it was like three hundred some when I was here. It's like, wow, I see that number.
It was thirty percent last year, so.
I look in the insurance pool.
And that's, is that everything, like for vehicles, everything, everything?
Except for tort liability.
Okay. Um, have we, have we ever, like, because I don't know what the policy is, do we know, like, what are our deductibles and such for?
We did review those.
We did review those, yeah.
Did they, did we lay some, or did we, yeah?
Yeah, she, she, Bridget had contacted us and let us know that we could save some money if we changed our deductibles.
Yeah.
So we did do that.
I don't know if it would be worth looking into other theories or not at this point. I know ICAP does a lot of accounting and stuff, but, um, which, I know insurance of all kinds has been hit hard recently, but that's a very steep number. I don't know if we'd be able to do anything at this point for this budget either, but it might be.
Well, no, I don't, I'm kind of curious, because wow.
It might be something to look into this summer.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know, any other questions on that?
No, just everything seems to have been replaced, kind of, right?
Will, do you have any-
So we're doing very good.
Well, we talked about parking lot last year, are you guys still planning on putting some money in? And making plans for that?
We don't, we didn't put any money for that, because we haven't heard anything from you guys.
I would probably say no at this point.
I, um, maybe no at this point, just because we don't know where we're at, but is it possible if we, um, say where, where were we at, like as far as-
Didn't you put some in last year now?
What we spent.
You put some in a, well, I don't know what the hell you call it, a special fund or something.
Well, it was capital improvements, I thought, or was that under contingency?
Well, there's, there's stuff for building and improvement, um, but-
But, but we just have to budget it if we're gonna spend it, is the thing.
Yeah, well, and I was thinking for, you know, and this is, this doesn't have to take place of this conversation, but something to think about, like, twenty-four, twenty-five, obviously, we have to budget more in that, because we don't know what's gonna happen in this building, we need that contingency. If, if we're going to not spend all of that, would it be possible to put, um, some of that, like when we do that budget amendment, some of that in more of a pocket for, for that purpose?
In the budget amendment?
Yeah, and-
For this current year?
Yeah, and kind of set it aside, you know how you, like,
Mm-hmm.
can, um, have like a little savings account, but it's part of that budget, and it could be for specifically for the, um, parking lot? Just saying, if we don't spend it, we could use it and use it more towards that, I don't, just a thought. I, how much is it, do we know?
Um, they, they never made a decision, they wanted to, the concrete was right at fifty-five thousand, somewhere in there, to do the parking lot nets with us and secondary road doing it. I done, Doug, uh, was supposed to get the Zach or, uh, Nick to get some asphalt numbers, and I, I, I don't wanna say, I think they told me a number, but I don't recall, but it was more than the concrete was.
Well, I'm just, you know, thinking maybe if we're not going to spend, if we don't have anything urgent that comes up, we could use, set aside part of what we're not gonna spend this year and then do the same next year and maybe have enough to budget for it.
Yeah, that's, I mean, well, it's just a discussion, because that's really all we-
Yeah.
The only thing that really needs to be fixed at this point around here, I mean, it's, we've taken care of just about everything else.
Yeah.
But that north side, we're, in the summer, is getting really bad, it's a whoop-de-woo, whoop-de-woo. Snowblower can't even get the snow off it.
Do you want me to add something to it, or you sure can?
At this point, I wouldn't, but-
Okay. Okay.
Honestly, you know, I'll put it in my notes to revisit it, but, um, I'd say, I mean, my opinion is leave it the same right now, till we know where we're at, if we have some, if we feel like we have cushion, yeah. You know, I'm for putting something in, but wait till we have the numbers by-
Yeah, it's, there's no rush on it, I mean, it's only gonna get worse, not better, but you probably still have a couple of years, I would guess.
Okay. Okay, any more questions about that one? Okay.
Good.
Thank you, Will.
Sure.
Then we can go to auditor.
Okay, so, uh, my salary, the four percent, um, deputies, for the last three years, I've been trying to get my two deputies, two of my deputies to eighty-five percent. So I have eight, added the eighty to eighty-five percent in those two. There's no change in my third deputy, that will be staying the same. And then, um, four percent for, um, the other staff. And that's really the only change, a little bit of a change in postage, because postage is going up. But other than that, that's it.
So are your deputies at eighty percent right now?
Yes, two of them are at eighty percent, and I'd like them to be at eighty-five. Um, one of them is deputy for real estate, the other is a deputy for, um, payroll, but they do, both do elections, so, I consider them both deputies of elections as well.
So we questioned, if they're at eighty-five percent, that's first deputies, so are they going to be called first deputies?
They would be first deputy for payroll and first deputy for real estate.
Did you say they already are or will be?
Will be, they are not, they're at eighty percent now, they, they're, both share that title, but I'd like them to both be first deputies individually for those responsibilities.
So I've heard the, I've heard the, uh, reference to election time and the extra hours you put in elec-, at election time?
Yes.
Beyond that, are these, are these normal courthouse hour jobs, or?
Yes, yep.
Don't take that. Don't, basically, there's no thought process when they go home, it's all done here, or, or, that sounds bad. Let me rephrase that. I guess, here's an opinion, uh, you know, and I'm gonna, you, you're making, you're somewhere around eighty thousand dollars, so eighty-five percent gets you to sixty-eight thousand dollars. And I, I'm not an expert on what people make up and down Main Street, but I don't know how many sixty-eight thousand dollar jobs there are up and down Main Street for people who, who work, and this is not personal whatsoever, who, who work. And I'm not hung up on the number of hours, I'm just talking, you know, eight to five, I just don't know how many, you know, people have careers, I'm sure that, that pay that.
Yeah, but as-
So it's a question, is what I'm saying.
Sure, and as, um, first deputies, they are in charge of that department, so, like, um, the one is in charge of payroll, she does the payroll, you know, she does, does all of it, at the accounting stuff. Um, the other one does real estate, and as far as election times, they're both, uh, deputy of elections, um, which is busy, extra time. Um, they do those jobs independent of me, they are in charge of making those decisions, you know, completing those decisions. Um, all of those without me, having to get permission from me, that is their responsibility. And it's the same as all the other deputies in the other departments, that they're getting eighty-five percent of that elected official, it's no different than those.
I understand that, I, I, I thank, thank you, I understand that. There's also a little bit of a connotation that everybody needs to make the same amount too, so, and I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's fair or not. Anyway.
What were they at last year to this year?
Um, wait, you know-
Do you remember the percentage you did last year to this year?
They were at, they were at eighty percent.
Oh yeah, that's right, there was zero.
Yeah.
There was, that's right, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, 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 that's where I fell, yeah, that's okay. So that's the other thing too, is, and you've heard this from others too, is, you know, they're deputies. We asked a lot of them last year with elections, um, and they had no, no raise, they had, um, no increase, I'd asked for eighty-five last year, they didn't get that either.
Right, but they're in charge of that department when, in your absence.
Yes, they are.
In your absence, is what it is, not they are in charge of that department, it's in your absence, you give them those duties, but it's in your absence, I believe is what the court says.
Yeah.
That they could perform those duties without you if something-
Well, they, they'd perform the duties of auditor without me, yes.
But those other specialty, specialty duties, they are in charge of, you're saying? Is there, is there some kind of election every year, I know there's a two-year cycle, but then there's city and school.
City and school this year, um, in the fall, and then the next part of twenty-five, twenty-six will be a primary election in the spring. And then that fall, we'll have a general election, so, yes, every year, we have some kind of election.
Well, I think this year is trying to get everybody where they need to be, so next year's a little bit easier. There's some different things we probably have to address too, in, in different departments and that have already been discussed and maybe coming up that we don't know about, so, those are, that just goes with it, gotta figure it out.
I, I will say, I mean, in my time on the board, I've, I think most county employees would know, but I've been in the auditor's office a fair bit for drainage and all the, all the things, I mean, the auditor's office and the board is closely tied together for a lot of things. And I appreciate the work they both do and stuff, um, but having most of the staff in the office being in a deputy position, I think, is concerning on the financial side. It went from a total spend in twenty-one, twenty-two to a little over a hundred and fifty. Now that current line item just for deputies is higher than the total staff cost in twenty-two, with another staff member on top of that, so, I, I'm not saying they're not worth it, and I know there's a lot of people that would make the same argument, um, but I think for, for now, it would be better to keep them at the same percentage. We are still talking raise, I understand everything that happened last year, I think we've all heard it a lot of times, um.
But I'm confused why all the other departments are getting raised to eighty-five percent, but mine is not.
Well, I don't think we made that decision, we've, we've, we've listened, but I mean, like, I put it as notes to readdress, I don't know what anybody else did.
I, I don't think we made that decision. Yeah, I, I had notes, notes for us, um,
Yes.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think, I don't think your, you or our office should be treated different than anyone else for percentage raises,
No, that's-
like stepping up percentage raises in that regard either, so no, it's, that's not my thing we're just talking about right now. Some of the other ones, yeah, we could've potentially addressed, but yeah, I just took notes for them and was gonna kind of see how we got through that first day, but, um.
Why is clerks only three point seven four percent?
I was wondering that same thing too, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to-
I guess, and you have some other stuff in there for part-time help, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
No, we didn't have anything for part-time.
Yeah, so you might wanna ensure that those are right, because-
Right.
I'll, I'll double check that, yeah, I saw that too, so, I'm not, I'm not sure unless-
I did see that there.
So, in the deputy line, it's three people?
Yes.
And then in the clerk line, it's just one person?
Correct, yes.
Yep.
And only two of the deputies are, I'm asking for a bump, uh, so.
Yep.
Because the other one's already there.
No.
No.
No, what is, what is the other one at?
Seventy-five, I believe.
I think you're, I think you're right.
I can't remember if it's seventy or seventy-five right now.
Yeah.
The two are eighty percent, and the one is at seventy-five percent.
I think seventy-five, either seventy or seventy-five percent, but I think it's seventy-five. Any other questions about that? We wanna move to elections. And most of the changes that you'll see is because of different, um, elections, so, the elections, Howard, for your information, are broke out by what type of election it is. So, um, this year, we won't have a general or a primary, so you won't see anything for budgeted in those line items, but you'll see it for city school, um, in the fall, and then primary the next spring, so, um, that's why you'll see different, um, amounts in different line items from the previous year.
Gotta think fast to catch up, so, the next primary, we do a point six.
Yes.
And that'll be part of this next, next year.
Yes, correct.
That goes fast.
Yeah, it does. So you really, when you're doing this budget, you really have to think, think ahead, because, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but there's really not, um, much for changes, everything's pretty much the same. We don't, uh, know of any special elections, but we always budget something just in case we do have a special. We did, if, um, there is one bigger change in, uh, rent, we use Columbia Event Center as one of our precincts, their rent is increasing, um, so we did allow for that change. So there's a little bit of an increase in our, our rent for the elections.
Do you know what that change is off the top of your head?
Um, well-
I see you had going from twenty-two to three thousand.
Yeah, so-
Page two, yeah.
Page five, I think.
Um.
I didn't know if it was that full difference, or if you just rounded up.
It is, no, it's a full difference.
That's for what, building or what?
Columbia Event Center, yeah, basically.
Yeah.
They, they are changing how they fill out their, their facilities, so.
Could we handle that kind of, I know parking would definitely be an issue, but could we handle that size of the number of people at the emergency response and training complex for spreading out voting machines and tables and stuff?
No.
I have to suck at that.
That's why I was, that's why I was asking, I know, I knew parking would be an issue right away.
Well, you'd have to move all of that equipment out too.
I mean, you get most of the west half that would be open.
Yeah, no, you have to have space for lines, you have to have-
For the amount of rent that we have to pay, it's not worth the change.
No.
Well, and that's-
Because then if we change the location, then you have to send notifications out to everybody, and you're looking for the cost of that.
And you have to post it, and you have to publish it, and have to do all the things, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, it's a lot more expensive than you'd think, yeah.
And it's kind of, you have a system.
Yeah.
You have a system now there, that, that's hard to, that's hard to change.
Yeah, no, just a, just a quick question.
It's an older crowd, we'll still go there.
Yeah, we still, we still, people have come here to vote, and they haven't voted here in four years, so.
Oh, yeah.
Long time, yeah.
So, yeah, it's hard for, to change, so. So that's the only real big change, um, on elections. Are there any questions about that? Okay, then we can go to district court. And there's not a lot on that budget. Any questions on any of that?
Yeah, we got a the fluctuation for the jurors and witnesses that were just there.
Yes, so, that, um, if you'll see how much we've paid already this year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we are way up. That, um-
It's one of those things, it's actuals rather than, I mean, you know, the anonymous trials, there are, so.
Yeah. Yeah. It's not really budgetary, yeah. Yeah.
Right, and I'm, wait, what I'm looking at is how we went from twenty-three, twenty-four, we had budgeted seventy-three hundred, and then twenty-four, twenty-five, we- Twenty-three, twenty-four, we had budgeted seventy-three hundred, and then twenty-four, twenty-five, we dropped it down to thirty-five hundred. And then we came back to seventy-five.
We wouldn't have done that, they would've, they would've dropped their budget, I don't, I don't really know why, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause their numbers were.
Did it have something to do with, you guys asked everybody to drop things as low as they could, no?
No.
Well, and there was a time, I don't know.
What district were?
Yeah, I don't remember now either, I was gonna say COVID, but that would've been way before that.
I thought about that too, but I had the same thought that no, we would've been after that for twenty-three, twenty-four even. I, I don't know why theirs was global, I don't, we didn't do anything.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, so that's just one that's going up because.
That is.
Obviously, you don't want to go over, you know, so we could go over if you could, I, for that, you know.
I don't know if it needs to be higher than that or not, but that's what they asked for, so I guess.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be higher, it's just, I just didn't know why they under budgeted last year and then went over on that.
No.
If.
Court costs is up too.
Yeah.
I mean, we're at five thousand already, so we could, we could hit ten thousand if the year continues, that's why I said I don't know if it needs to be higher. But.
Yeah, cause I mean, honestly, you look at court expense too, they, they had seventy-six, twenty-two and budgeted eight thousand and then dropped it to three. Now it's back up to seven, so who, I don't know their way of thinking, but. I thi- I think it probably needs to stay there by looking at the trends.
Right, and, and, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, for their total percentage used though, they are. Only at thirty-one percent, I'm not saying we should drop it down, but I'm, they are on track to spend less than last year, so. Overall, as total.
Yeah, yeah.
Their court appointed attorney costs for juveniles is a little over, but we can't really plan for that, that.
Yep.
That used the entire budget, but fiscal year before and twenty-four, so.
Yes, it's, it's hard to know what one year is gonna bring in court over the next.
Well, yeah, the amount that it changed from fiscal year twenty-two to fiscal year twenty-three. That dropped significantly, and then it was back up in twenty-four.
All depends on what happens.
Yep.
And that, that ties in with our expenses for like C I J D C and stuff too, we could go all year and not have any bills, and then the next year, we're. Twice or three times what we budgeted, so it, we can't really predict that, just have to kinda hit a target.
And they're not over, you know, for what they did for expenditures, you know, for this year compared to twenty-three, twenty-four, you know.
No.
There was, you know, sixty-five thousand, so I would say, I honestly leave it, I would not change anything if, if it were me.
Do you have the fair coming in next?
Um. Yeah, so these are the non-departmental, I did not ask any of them to come in, uh, we usually, we haven't in the past, so.
Cause they do their presentation.
Yeah, uh-huh, so, um, this is just you going through all of them and discussing what they have requested.
Yep.
Um, on the, in the front of your booklets is, um, a sheet that tells what they've all requested, um.
It's in the plastic sleeve.
Year way at the beginning.
That's where we go to those.
Yeah, so, um.
Which is also on that line item too, probably.
Yeah, yep, and I did put it in the budget too, but, um, just if you wanted to double check that.
Yep, yep.
So the fair. The request, uh, twenty-five and then five for the gate, so thirty thousand.
I mean, last year, well, I don't know, they, twenty-three, twenty-four, it looks like they got thirty-five thousand. Was there a specific reason why they got extra that year?
I think.
Did they have a, a project or something?
I think you, did you guys put extra in for the grandstand that year?
Cause it's been twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, they had thirty-five thousand.
The.
Are you in non-departmental?
I'm in fair.
Fair.
Oh, you're in fair.
Yeah, so I think what we did was we were doing thirty thousand and then five thousand for the gate, and then last year, we. Pulled ten thousand from it for.
Was it ten thousand you pulled from it?
Yeah, we went from thirty to twenty last year, and then they wanna get five. Back, added to, not go back to the thirty thousand, but they wanna go back to, add these twenty-five thousand this year, so.
Well, I mean, I, I think they always prove that they do the fundraising for the free gate, and honestly. That brings the numbers up on our fair, I think, a lot, I mean, I, I, I think that, you know, we should continue to give them that five thousand for the free gate.
Yeah.
You know, there's a lot of people that maybe wouldn't go if they didn't have that, but, I mean, but we, so. Twenty-five and five is what they're asking for then. Um, gotta raise the question, when's the grandstand project get talked about?
We could talk about that anytime, I mean, that is, that is. In conjunction with TIF and end up, had some of our questions of if we plan to do any financing, we need to budget for that, so. We could have that conversation now.
I mean.
Cause that is another source of funds we could use to contribute towards the fair without having income from general basic.
Yeah, you're not gonna be able to use, um, the internal loan for that, no, you're gonna have to do a G O.
No, we would, we would have to do a bond for that.
Right, because it's in the city, correct? But, but you guys have already voted on a million dollar loan, has that up to, that hasn't actually happened yet.
Oh, no, we have not, we have not. We have not voted on any.
The, the, the loan was the internal loan from rural basic.
Yeah.
Right, that's what. Yeah, that's that done, that's that.
That was, yes, that's done, that's been done.
That's for road.
That was, yeah, that was for road projects, not, not for the fair.
That's.
Yeah, that's not for the fair.
Okay, gotcha.
But that has been done, yes.
Yeah.
Correct. Do you have the figure handy for how much we're projecting for revenue from the TIF this next year?
Yeah, it's in non-departmental, I think it's five something, but if you look in your non-departmental.
Five something. And that's going to rapidly steadily increase.
So it's five thirty-six, seven eighty-nine for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Right, yeah. So.
But that's with the hundred and some thousand on the first loan, and that has to go to pay off the, the other loans we have, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, right.
So it's not all just the turbines.
Right.
Right. Because this year, we froze that, correct, we froze that value, so actually, we won't exactly see that yet.
Yes. Right, we will, we will see it, yes.
We will. We will see money this first year, because they were already, they were already past that first year zero.
Okay.
Yes. They were already.
For most of them, but not all of them.
Okay, so the TIF will generate that money from the turbines this year?
Yes.
Turbines and gold eagle.
Well, yeah, gold eagle always was, but.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, but yeah, the, the additional above gold eagles is coming from the turbines, it's four hundred some thousand.
Okay.
So that's year one money.
Right, cause then the hundred and some thousand is going to pay the other loans.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, year one revenue, we have about four hundred, rough math.
So, I mean, I don't know what anybody's thinking about the grandstand project, but. You know, obviously, that's not in place and we don't have those numbers, you know, as far as financially where we're at. Would we be wrong with contributing some to general, from general basic to the grandstand project? I mean, and I'm not talking a huge dollar, no, either, but some, but something, I guess I don't even know, but I mean, not a million dollars, cause I, obviously, we can't afford that.
What do you have in mind? Well.
You couldn't do that, no.
I'm not opposed to talking about something from general basic towards the grandstand, but I think when we get to the end of the numbers here, I don't think. We're gonna have flexibility to do stuff like that, so.
So should we just?
We still need to make sure we hit the forty-five percent, so.
I, I would say if we're talking contributing something from, towards the grandstand, it should be from the TIF.
Yep.
But we have to do a, a loan for that, for a G O bond, I mean.
Yeah, but we'll have four hundred thousand in revenue just from the wind turbines in this first year, so.
Yeah, but you've already kinda froze those assets to go towards the TIF and the urban renewal plan.
That's where the money's coming from.
The grandstands is in the urban renewal.
Yeah, the grandstands is in the urban renewal plan.
Oh, okay, and that project could, I, so correct me, well, how could that project be in there with it being in the city? That's just where I'm, I do kinda confuse it.
I had that same question too, and the attorneys assured us that it could be, but I had that same issue.
Because it has to be contingent, you know, to, uh, if we put the roads.
It has to be contiguous and.
Because it's the whole county, the whole county.
We put the entire road system.
We asked a contingent, contiguous, I was in that.
Contiguous, yep.
And.
Right, but what road is touching the, that?
We put all the public right away in the county except, so water.
Even in the city?
There was.
Yeah, so the city did sign off, they, when they did their, all the cities had to do a consent agreement.
Yeah, yeah. Um. City consent. Yep.
Algonia had to do a, a special one that had the fairgrounds in it.
Okay.
I mean, that'd be something you could double check with the attorneys or whatever, but.
Well, yeah, and I was wondering, did we, did we use N I C O G to assist us in that process, or council of governments?
No. No, we used, um.
Can I ask why? Because like, we, before, we used N I C O G and the attorney, is, has it changed what we use?
It's. It's the same attorney that was handling both, so, we just didn't use N I C O G.
Yeah, yeah. The guy that was there before is no longer there.
Yeah.
Right.
And, um.
Joe Myrie.
Yeah.
But they were a great asset, is all I'm saying to, you know.
They, they hired a financial consultant to help, what, I can't remember what firm that was.
Okay, Northland Securities.
Yeah.
Okay, so right now, I mean, do we just put it on there to revisit, um, a possibility of putting some money towards the grandstand or?
I mean, we don't, and, and we don't have to do. Anything or everything in the first year, I mean, it could be something we plan out ex-ample for. Three years or five years or whatever, I don't, I don't know that it has to be immediate, but I think that.
Well, I think to them, they need some funding pretty quickly to get the project going, because. They are on a time limit, they, I mean, they've been getting their, their approval extended out to continue having the races there, if they. If they can't get the project done, the. Um, the, the racetrack will essentially be shut down because it'll be deemed, you know, not capable of, you know, holding races.
They already sent out the schedule for the races.
Yeah.
Yep.
For this year.
They, well, they were approved for this year, but they can't guarantee going forward that they're gonna be able to keep the grandstands operating. And without being able to keep the grandstands operating, there will be no races. And there's a lot of revenue that comes into the county from having those races.
I think to some degree, it's also just a focal point of the county, I, I don't think a. Huge piece of infrastructure like that should be allowed to fall apart and just everybody forget about. It benefits a lot of people during fair time, races are on top of that, hopefully, we'll be more with it if there's, um. Improvements made to the facilities, but, um, I see it as something where. Everyone in the community would have the ability to use it if they would like to for whatever, I mean. Obviously, it's based on the events and stuff that are there, but I think it's some, something that could benefit. A wide range of people, and since we're talking. We're not talking new tax dollars from, uh, residents in some, some town or some. Area of the unincorporated area, we're talking specific tax dollars just generated from these wind turbines. I know they've caused, um, heartache in areas of the county, and I think. How we use that money to benefit the people here is important, so that people have something, okay, well, at least we got that for a benefit. Um, whether it's the grandstands or other projects, I guess that's the way I'm looking at it.
You're right. And I agree, I just don't wanna bite off more than we can chew, because, you know, all I've heard for, you know, like I say, almost a year now is, is how broke we are, so. I, I, that's what concerns me, and that's why I thought, well, could we do something out of general basics, you know, at least. Because, you know, when you're doing loans, that's putting future burden on someone. And I know you say the income's going to come from the, the wind turbines, but like I said, I don't wanna bite off more than we can chew and have that. Um, come back and bite us, like, oh, we're not getting as much, you know? That's my concern, is the uncertainty of everything, cause they are already not generating as much as we originally thought. So that, I'm just throwing that out there for, you know, concerns for the taxpayers going forward, you know, if we borrow a bunch of money, you know. In the beginning.
Well, and, and that's what I said, I've said that from the beginning, that whatever we borrow, sh- we should have. The ability or the expectation to be able to repay it within one or two years, and.
Right, right.
I guess if we're at the front end of a twenty-year lifespan on this TIF. If we do something in year one that we expect to pay off in year one or two, um. Worst case scenario that happens, we should still easily be able to cover it over the lifespan of that, I, I mean. We're talking. Ballpark three million dollars a year when these get fully online for their valuation, so. If we're talking a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand. That should be such a small percentage of what we're supposed to get, that. I, I don't see a lot of risk there, that's what I'm saying, um.
So this, this TIF money, can you only use it for certain, these, these things that you've listed, you can't use it for salary, you can't use it for parking lot, you can't.
Yes, yes.
It is not, it's.
It's only, it is only what is listed in the urban renewal plan, which is road projects and the grandstands, that's all we have.
So if it doesn't go to the grandstand, where will it go?
Roads are the only other, road, road and bridge projects is the only other things we have in there, we can't amend the plan to add something else if.
Road projects.
Someone comes up with an idea that qualifies for spending that money, we can go through the process and amend the plan, but that's just the structure of it.
So for what it's worth, I can get on board with, it's a. Iconic is a little strong, but it's a strong feature of the county, I mean, um, my informal constituent, uh, ask him. Ask people what they think, uh. Overwhelmed, people think it's. Crazy, it's a little strong too, thinks it's, it's way out of proportion, but they think, that's not everybody, there's, there's other people out there that think, hey, you know. Don't like it, but it's just a fact of life, it's gotta be kept up, but, but overall, I, if I had to put a number to it, I'd say. Two-thirds of people are just overwhelmingly. Against, you know, and, and, or there has to be, should be something between zero and a million dollars.
And, and there can be, I think that was one of the. General misconceptions about what we were talking about, was assuming that when that plan got approved, that it was a. Blank check for a million dollars going to the fair, and that was not the case, but what we put.
But eventually, you're going to have to make a decision as to what the check's gonna be.
Correct, correct, but what we put in the plan is the upper limit of everything, so. If we put a road project in that we have a price tag of five hundred thousand and the actual contract comes in at seven hundred and fifty. We either don't do it, we amend the plan, or we pay the difference out of local funds, or some other source of funds. But whatever's in the plan is our limit, not our minimum.
I understand.
So, we could do a hundred thousand, we could do two hundred, we could do two fifty, we could do five hundred, is zero to a million, not a million guaranteed.
I understand, but, but someday, someday, I assume someday soon.
Well, that's, that's a decision we make here, um.
You're gonna have to make a decision.
For that dollar thing.
And I would say I'd echo that, like, the people that talk to me. Agree that, yeah, it's great to have the grandstands, and it is something that's been a part of, you know. Our fair, and it, it does help with the fair and everything and the races, and it does bring economic, you know, the. our fair, and it does help with the fair and everything and the races, and it does bring economic, you know, development somewhat to us, um.
Activity would be better, better word.
Activity, yeah, there you go, there you go, and, um, but that was the concern too, that a million dollars, I, I heard over and over, do not, do not, do not, that it will really upset people, and I said, well, I, I, I can't say that that's been decided, but.
It has.
And, you know, there's people who definitely want to see some money go to it, but, a million.
Including myself, including myself, I am not against the grandstand project, myself, but, but I want, I wanted to throw out there that.
Yeah. And me, and I'm not, I'm not either.
Yep, and, and like I said, I think that was a common misconception when we talked about all that stuff, I mean, I think we talked about that here enough that people could have gotten that message, but I don't know if the message got out very far that that was not a guarantee, um.
I know, okay.
So are there any, are there, has there been any talk over the weeks, months, years, is, is, has there been any talk about it's gonna take a certain amount from the supervisors, or from the county, however to match somebody else, or is you perceive that coming, or nothing like that?
That, that would be a good question for the fair board members who are on that committee. I do know the report from the shared group, which is a consultant that they have hired, which they're paying for each month or continuously, the longer this campaign gets drawn out.
Right.
So, there is an expense to time to this factor, but, um, they did a study, survey, whatever you wanna call it, and, and that's where, I mean, to some degree, for everything that goes on, you get people that are vocally opposed to something, and they're, they're gonna reach out, but the ones who are supportive are likely not going to say anything, um, but it was very heavily focused on in that report by the people that they surveyed, that county involvement would be critical, whether it was getting other businesses to, to donate and support the cause, or whether it was actually getting to the total target. It was kind of a combination of both of those, and if you guys don't have that report, I can make sure we get it.
I have it. I do, I think I do have it, but just not here.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't have it here with me either, otherwise I'd pull it out, but.
Because I think some of the things they were doing, like grants or something, that they need to, to show a, a match from us.
Yeah, and I, I think there's also stuff where, I think some of their donations are coming in, like, it might be X number of dollars over three years or whatever.
Sure.
And even though they don't have the money in hand today, they can take that commitment to the bank and say, okay, we have a commitment of this, this is the schedule of it, and they can advance that money earlier, um, so, that's something, even if we talk X number of dollars over three years or five years, one, that helps us on the fact that we're gonna have revenue coming in those years, and it's going to ramp up, but also, they would have a commitment that the money is expected to come or is going to come, and then they could move forward with a project whenever they hit their threshold, and I think, I'm going out on a little bit of limb here, but I think they said they need either fifty or a little over fifty percent to be able to start construction of the.
What's the, what's the dow- what's the estimate?
Just shy of two million, if I remember right, um, one point eight maybe, something like that, so.
Okay. And they need a million to, to?
So that there's a million would be a threshold of potentially being able to start construction.
Okay.
And I know they, they have several, um, businesses and commitments now, I wanna say it's something like four, maybe five hundred thousand of a ballpark total, um, last I heard, so I'm not saying the county needs to do a million, I, I'm not saying that at all, but, um, that's, that's part of where the, the million wasn't up, it wasn't, it wasn't a guaranteed thing, so. Whether that's food for thought for today, or whether we, if anyone needs to do more research or ask other questions, feel free, but that's, that's a little bit more detailed, or the backstory.
Yeah. No, that's good.
From what I know.
That's good, it's helpful to know.
Any other questions on that come to mind? Or Josh, anything?
I think, I'd have to concur with, uh, you know, what was that, like, I've talked to quite a few people about the grandstand project, and, and I know people reach out to me, and, and I think it's, yeah, pretty unanimous in my conversations that a million is too much, but, uh, but certainly they were open to the county contributing to that, um, say more of a, a number in my mind, or in conversations with constituents, was in that two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollar ballpark, but that's, of course, open for discussion and, and, yeah. That's just where I'm at in talking to people.
Yeah, good food for thought, thanks for chiming in there, electronic plate.
I, I'm here off and on.
Any other, other questions?
Okay, wanna move on to the historical society? And, um, they have asked for seven thousand this year, last year they were given six.
Thoughts from anyone? It's a bad one.
Yeah, I, I really am a mission, I really, I never really crossed money yet.
Another big project they were talking about is siding on that building now, so there's.
If you drive by it, you can kinda tell where it's, you know.
Mm-hmm.
I think this is one of the last major projects that they have to do on that building for at least a little while, so, um, I'd, if we have a thousand, I'd support it, if that's something we gotta leave off, we can do that again.
I don't think a thousand's gonna make or break the budget right now, so.
No.
Hard art. You have cars.
Yeah, yeah, but we got bigger things to deal with than that, I would say.
Yep.
Yeah, and they definitely, you can see everything they're doing, so I.
They use money very well, I will say that for sure.
They do, they do. Yeah.
They, they operate a pretty tight budget, and.
And they're very active.
Our project's, project's about everything they're doing.
Yes, mm-hmm, very. Okay.
Okay, next is the libraries. Of course, we all know the history from last year, this year they're asking.
Don't touch it.
This, this year they're asking for the same amount, and I agree with Amber, please don't do that again.
I, I mean, I'm just gonna say right, right out of the chute, that, um, they have the public and the librarians, and everyone has proven to us over and over over the last year how greatly needed and wanted and used the libraries are, and that they do so much more than what we actually even know about. I, I do not want to make their lives miserable another few months in saying, I don't know, we might lure it, I real, my, if I were to say right now, I really would request that we leave it alone unless for some reason we absolutely can't, but we, if that is the case, we really do need to communicate that, like ASAP, like, you know, give reasons. But, um, then looking at the fund balance, I, I don't know why we couldn't. That's all I can say.
So, I have more questions about, uh, I think I heard it, it, it's this two hundred seventy-three thousand, I don't know if it just, that's just happened over the years, and I think it's divided evenly twelve ways, that's not correct.
Well, there's, there's, it's by population, but there's two different parts to the libraries, um, one is.
Kind of three.
Okay, go ahead, Kyle.
Yeah, there's, there's a tech grant, and then there's a divided payment, and the two parts of, there's two parts of the divided payment, there's a flat dollar that goes to each, and then there is a part of that that's based on population, so there's.
So when you do population, uh, pick a town, pick any town, I don't, so you do the population of the town plus a certain radius, or, or is it by school district, or by?
That's just city movements.
Just the town, yeah.
Just the city movements.
Yep.
So I, Howard, to give you an idea, just for the city of Laverne, 'cause I know their budget, it'd be their divided payment, uh, what they receive is maybe in that fifteen to eighteen, eighteen hundred dollar amount, um, their tech grant being, I think it's five or six thousand dollars, and then the Gafford County portion given is closer to that thirteen to fifteen thousand dollar range, so that's the most significant part of their budget there.
So what happens, and not, you brought up Laverne, it just happened to be, fit my question, so they're on, they're right on the border with Humboldt County, do they, do is, is, and I'm not saying it should be, I'm asking, I just wanna know what happens, if theirs is by, is by population of the whole town, uh, they don't, do they get the same help from Humboldt County then, and I'm talking about.
About.
Then you have West Bend and Fountain and.
To be population of the Cassous County residents, um, Humboldt County would also contribute their portion.
Of the residents of Humboldt County, so they would.
Okay, right, 'cause we have about two thirds in Cassous, one third in Humboldt, West Bend would be the same way.
West Bend is split out a little bit different, they get a percent of, sort of the total, or is it of, I don't know, I wanna say it's two percent of something, um.
Well, they, they only have maybe ten residences in Cassous County, whereas we have a little more percentage of our town in, in each county.
Yep. But Wes, I know West Bend is done differently, um, there is a calculation for that.
Okay.
Okay, can I answer my, my question, so it's based on the town's population? There's some special circumstances if the line runs through the middle of town, but if it's Fenton or Wesley, that doesn't enter into it at all?
And then there's the tech grant, a certain portion of that's their tech grant.
Five, five thousand, I think.
Anybody wanna change it?
Please say no.
I, I'm not saying it should be changed, but I think one thing that surprised me, uh, a little bit of the discussion last year was some of the conversations from the cities, and how little some of them apparently contribute, I think that's, that's one of the things that's been on my mind, I'd like to see some of those numbers for their total budget, so that we have a better picture of the whole thing, we're not just looking at our piece of pie that's going in, but that's a little bit of information, I haven't necessarily formally requested anything yet, but, um.
To that note, Kyle, uh, I think maybe we touched on this at some point, but again, just 'cause I know Laverne's budget, the state reduced what the city can levy for libraries, uh, I, I think, I think the amount was cut almost in half, and so, previously the city gave seven-ish thousand to Laverne Public Library here, and now it's in that thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollar range, so just, just so you're aware of that.
Okay. Where does, where does the state think the money should come from?
The county, apparently.
Tell us.
Who knows?
Tell us we can only tax so much, and then tell us we have to pay more bills. Typical.
Well, that was a good answer to the question, if, if they, if they, I mean, if the state severely
Yeah.
decreased what the city can give, if, if, they can't do what they can't do, and we can't either, of course, but I'm, I'm, there's a, there's a bend point, but anyway, so eventually, maybe I, I'm not suggesting this, but someday, somebody's gonna say it's gonna take more.
Well, at some point, I mean, you're probably right in that aspect, um, and I don't, I can't say this is ninety percent of people versus ten percent of people in this county, but I do know there were individuals that made comments to me during all the stuff last year that they would donate more to their private libraries if it wasn't so heavily, um, funded by tax dollars, and that's, uh, I don't know where you go with that.
That sounds pretty hot.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
That, that was, that was the way they, they looked at it, and it wasn't one or two people that said that, but, um, they did say that they felt it should be, um, supported, but not by both, I mean, if you already know what's coming out of one pocket, you may be less likely to take that the other. And I don't know, I don't know that that weighed into the conversation much at all, but I did receive that feedback.
And that, that's just as, I think, that's just as relevant as, as what I said about the grants, it's, it's informal, it's not scientific, but it's there, I mean, you're hearing.
Right. It is, but it's, but it, you're right, it does, it's, it's the same kind of sentiment, um, so.
We have to take that into consideration when we're doing this, because it's for, we're gonna make big decisions for everyone. Think we could get through miscellaneous quick?
Yeah, that's pretty easy, there's not much there, so miscellaneous, um, has their township officials, no change there, I left it at the same.
Yeah.
Audit and clerical services, that's how much, um, will we build this year for, um, Gardner. Uh, cost allocation plan, uh, forty-five hundred I did talk, he doesn't expect to increase that, NICOG dues, that shows the change that um, Josh talked about earlier today, um, disability, disability in case we need to do any improvements there, so that's pretty self-explanatory. Um, if you wanted to go to Sanitarian Weed Commissioner, we could, um, I, because we don't have one, um, I pretty much just put in the same figures as last year, for you guys to look at and tell me what you want me to do.
I'd say, I mean, of course, on budget.
Yeah.
I mean.
Is there a reason supplies got decreased, I mean, it's two hundred dollars, but.
I, I think, I think just because I looked at what we spent this, that last year and thought.
That has been historically lower than, yeah.
We were, yeah, so, but, uh, that's definitely for you guys to decide, I.
Do you think we should have ma- maybe, uh, meeting a mileage the same, just because we don't know if maybe they might go to a few more meetings, I don't know, that's just a thought.
Yeah.
Well, we need to plan for that, because we want them to be able to go those meetings and get more knowledge and stuff for.
I.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
And, and I could even change that, this I did, you know, a while ago, but.
Yeah. It's just a thought since we're looking at someone.
Do you want two thousand, or do you want more than that?
Well, I would say two thousand would be fair, 'cause that's where we were at, I don't think it should go, I don't think we need to go more than that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we leave supplies miscellaneous the same, or?
I was thinking we should leave supplies, because, you know, we get a new person in there, they may need more stuff to kinda get the job started and stuff, so, I mean.
I don't know that it's a huge deal, but two hundred bucks, miscellaneous is about them, so.
No, two hundred bucks.
Okay.
Probably not the end of the world either way, but I don't know.
So, so if they don't spend their budget, this department doesn't spend their budget, it just goes back in? There's no, there's no banking if we have their department.
No, it goes back to the general fund.
No.
That's the, that's the department that does not.
And then, you know, historically, they look like they stay fairly close, you know, the while closings, you just never know, I mean.
Yep.
You don't ever know. I think staying close to that dollar amount budgeted is what we need to aim for, to make sure we have a good view of our fund balances.
Yeah.
And that. All right, so I think that seems there, just a couple of changes, right?
Which ones?
The supplies and the meeting.
Yeah, the meeting and the, meeting and supplies, or did, did somebody say something else?
Supply. Yeah.
There's the equipment line too, on the next page, that has been reduced, do we wanna look at keeping that the same too?
But if you look in past years, I mean, they haven't used it since twenty-one, twenty-two.
Maybe we leave that one at fifteen and put supplies and miscellaneous back, everything.
The only thing I could think of. As well as the meeting of knowledge.
And, and meeting of knowledge, yeah.
Okay.
I would agree.
Any other thoughts? Howard?
No. Okay. I, I mean, I can sort, go back to where they were, okay.
Okay, and then, do you wanna look at weed commissioner?
Yeah, I don't think that quite.
Or weed eradication.
Weed.
Kind of a misnomer, isn't it?
Yeah. So I, do you want me to change meeting mileage back on that one? It's just hardly ever been used, that's why you changed it.
Yeah, I don't think so.
That one's okay, to leave?
I, I mean, that's my opinion, I think that can be.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, especially with the, you know, having an accounting vehicle and, and you can, you know.
Right. That's cut down on that a lot, having a vehicle.
Yep, yeah.
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 Are there, are there meetings for weed, weed commissioner, there are?
I'm sure there is, yeah, yeah.
I think there are, yeah.
Need a conference to know how to kill weeds?
I don't think that's what it's about.
Well, I think there's more of, uh, you know, regulations and stuff like that that they have to keep up on
I know there's. Right.
And, and so I'm sure, you know, different state laws coming out, they gotta keep updated on that kinda stuff here.
I remember there's a roadside conference over Spencer or public area somewhere over that direction every fall.
People won't take you very far, of course, but.
Well, if you're using a county vehicle.
No, I, I don't mean literally transportation, I just meant if there was a registration.
Registration or whatever.
True.
Won't take you very far.
Oh, yeah, that's.
True. Well, do you want her to put back that five hundred or what do you want? I mean, that's.
I don't have any idea, I didn't know there were, I don't, I don't have a clue.
I don't know that we're gonna save the world by changing it either way.
I think it's, yeah.
I mean, if we spend more than that, we have to do a budget, then I think that's gonna cost more.
Meal reimburse notes for when they're gone, but the, the. Meal reimburse notes for when they're at meetings.
But I think it would kind of historically, you know.
Second, they're right, they're right.
On the top, like your second one, put it differently.
Probably.
It probably comes out of the sanitary.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-three, the amount of use of the four thousand.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, it goes to meetings just for weed commissioner, they're probably severing it.
I mean, if, if you guys put that in.
So it'll probably come out of the sanitary.
But that is the line that that comes out of the meeting mileage, you know, if they have meal while they're at a meeting, the second one.
It's not a big budget to.
It depends if it's overnight or, you know, because sometimes it can come on a payroll if it's overnight and all that kinda stuff, so it depends.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but otherwise, yes.
Okay.
Sure, me, it is nice, but I wanna check some more.
Yeah, what Tammy was just saying too is a lot of times the sanitary meetings will be kind of a good junction for weed commissioner meetings, so.
Yeah.
But it's paired together, she said a lot of times they'll just use that as the sanitary budget.
Yeah.
So that's fairly common across the state?
Yeah, and those two positions being together is definitely, yeah.
No, that makes sense.
Leave it.
Function. Yep.
Just leave it.
Leave it. If we have to address it in the middle of the year, whatever, we'll know for the next one, but.
Okay.
All right, well.
Is it terrible?
Yeah.
Five minute, five minute break and hit the.
Yeah, we'll do a five minute break and.
Tom, Brian, I'd be able to get the, the budget request, you guys went through them, I'll be requesting this.
See if Tyler, you know, thinks that though, 'cause.
We could just make a copy of this. Oh, perfect. For you and I, not for anyone. The copy of the segment, you're gonna talk about the segment two, that's great. The ones that you talked about this morning and the segment.
Well, I won't know, I mean, those are departments mostly, those are.
Oh, it's like the ambulance and stuff?
Yeah, but that's a whole budget, that's not a request.
Oh, right, okay. Oh, it's not like we did this morning?
That's a whole budget, no. Well, I mean, it's a budget, but it's a whole budget, it's not just, that, that's a tax limit.
Oh. It's like a, yeah.
Wanna make sure you get those back, those are all of the proposals and, uh, bonds from the.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Tyler.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a whole, that's a whole complicated, yeah, yeah.
What's that?
Hey Paul, how are you doing?
Engineering and all that.
Josh, good morning, don't miss a like it.
I don't.
Interrupted there.
No, it's okay, it's all good.
Yeah.
You're not, uh.
You're graduating.
We're probably gonna be.
Recommission.
Which is dirt cheap compared to the other dirt cheap. I mean, typically, if you drive to this area, one thousand, fifteen hundred for a half inch coefficient, maybe three hundred in that fifteen hundred of all part of like some of the projects. This will have an inch coefficient for a cheaper.
I don't believe I've met you.
Howard, please.
Okay, yep, get it out here on the highway?
You're not far enough there.
Far enough.
I live in town.
Okay.
You don't care.
You don't care. Today, we're talking inch, inch or three quarters.
You're actually, you're driveway in first?
Yeah.
Oh, perfect, yeah, I know exactly where you're at. You know, we got a bunch to do.
Hey.
So good.
How's it going on?
Good, so.
Looking good.
But, uh, you wanted to.
We've made that decision.
Okay. All right.
A little bit of dirt, maybe a kicker, yeah.
I know it was bad time.
That way I get rid of all the dirt, so, there you go.
I, I talked to Jesse a little bit. I mean, either way.
Doug, you're studying pretty hard over there.
I tried.
I mean, we'll share.
I should ask you just, thought on.
Well, I, I'd like to go ahead, which is boring.
Oh, okay.
They're getting in there. It's gonna cost us twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars after everything's done, to get everything paid again, you know, and then you're still gonna, yeah. You're still gonna have your, there probably be one more time or two after, put a surface over it, 'cause it, it, it continues to settle.
Okay.
My recommendation.
What's that?
Okay, and it, it makes no difference to me, so it's, uh, defer to, to you.
I want out.
Up there, up north, it's one hundred, fifteen thousand. North of Sway City, I can't, I don't think he does the design on that one.
The one north of Sway, the sixty-six four.
Sixty-six four, it's a big difference.
So, if you've got your, you have time.
Right.
Just show.
Well, yeah, just when time comes, I'll, uh.
That'll, that'll.
I'll review one of them. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hard copy there, also I told Tammy, but there are the, both the bids and the, the bonds and everything, return to you.
Thank you.
All right, ready?
Yeah.
And then, one we get thirty, one we do.
Yeah, yep.
Just give a whole review there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are you guys ready? Ready? All right, it's ten oh one, uh, next item is to consider bids for Grange Beach Ford laterals forty and forty-two, item improvement. You wanna go ahead?
Yeah, good morning all, Tyler Downey, professional engineer with Golden Main. Tabulated the bids that were received a week ago for this tile improvement project. There were five bids, there were a number of different options, different, uh, material considerations and different size considerations, ultimately, that boiled down to bids for either concrete or plastic pipe on either the, uh, three-quarter inch or one inch coefficient for drainage. We've tabulated and checked everyone's numbers, satisfied with everyone's, uh, responsibility and responsiveness. There were, I should clarify, in the bid tabulation that is attached to the recommendation letter, there's twelve pages just because of the amount of, uh, different options, sizes, materials and road crossing divisions. However, the last page shows all of the different options and configurations in complete packages. Anywhere in the tabulation that there is items denoted in yellow, those indicate sections where we had, when we tabulated with the unit prices that were entered, the, uh, errors in calculations for the total unit price or the total quantity prices that the contractors had entered. So what we have is what, uh, they're labeled as they were read and as they are tabulated. That led to, um, some differences in prices for what the, uh, values were as they were read. One of them, uh, for the one inch coefficient on plastic for the lateral forty-two, uh, there was an apparent low from Zachary Lubenthal excavating. There was a math error that made that as tabulated amount higher. However, uh, when contacting Lubenthal excavating, he has the opportunity to, to honor that value as it was read. He has submitted in writing, uh, that he is willing to do that. Now, because of the broken up, uh, bid, if there was a desire to award the lateral separately, which the contract documents state trustees have the ability to award based on the different divisions and alternates as is in the best interest of the drainage district, that lower price could be honored. At that, because of these bids, and there's a lot of different ways that it could be compared to the engineer's estimate, but the largest capacity in the, uh, plastic option is, I'll just say approximately half of what the engineer's estimate was for that project for that size. So it's then my recommendation that because of the, the bid values as they came in, it seems to make the most economical sense for the capacity to go with the one inch drainage coefficient in the plastic pipe, uh, awarded then to the lows on those projects. Any, any questions? I, also, I would state that there are, uh, different, the, the road crossings, the different divisions for the crossings of the roads that are the responsibility of the secondary roads department. The material doesn't change except on the one paved road where there was an option for either open cut and using concrete pipe or a boring of a steel casing that ultimately wouldn't disturb, uh, the, the top, the pavement. For that consideration, I would defer to the, uh, wishes of the secondary roads department. So I, I defer that to Doug for his recommendation. Either way, the capacity doesn't change and it does not impact the project itself or the district's concern, as those expenses are, uh, those of the secondary roads department, so. With that, yeah, if there's any questions, comments.
Doug, do you have anything you wanna say for the secondary roadside event between open cut or boring?
I would recommend the board, board, take the boring option.
You would?
Yes.
Okay. Don't we, we have that road kind of tentatively in the plans for the next five years or so?
It's in the five-year program, but no matter what it's done, uh, whether if it's a year after, there's gonna have to be full depth patches. Our experience with that is there's gonna be an additional twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars with the additional patches and maintenance and, um, I think overall, over the life of the whole thing, it, it would be better off. There's still gonna be settlement.
Okay. Okay, so you're comfortable with that difference for the price of it, okay? Well, I have, uh, eighty-six thousand?
Uh, I think the open cut was bid around.
Open.
Thirty and the, the, um, bore was about ninety.
I just see total here for open cut was nine twenty-two, seven seventy-five and seventy-five cents and the steel was one million, eight thousand, one fifty-nine, so I just did rough math there, eighty-six between those two.
Seems like a pretty big chunk of change to me.
Yeah.
Yes. It's a, so that was as it was calculated, uh, Zach submitted something that he was willing to honor, to as red. Would, would that be the, the. What, what it ended up being on that lateral forty-two, for, Howard's question was, uh, about the Lubenthal excavating on forty-two. What the math error there was, was for the, uh, fill and plug of the old main through the road, there was a, a, a total price and then the unit price. So it was a sixty-six feet of pipe to be filled. The amount that was entered for the unit price was the same that was entered in for the total price. The total was the one that was intended, however, when we tabulate these, the unit prices rule. So it was that total price, twenty-five hundred dollars times sixty-six feet, which ended up being essentially another hundred and sixty thousand dollars in a math error on the, the bid, which is then why we, we reached out to Zach to make sure of the, double check the intent. And, uh, again, he submitted in writing, signed.
I saw that, I, I, I thought maybe that applied to the other line.
Right.
Right.
Oh, no, sorry, he, he meant to, he, his intent is to honor the lower, the as red.
On both cases.
Correct, yes.
Tyler, question on that, um, have two contractors, can be added engineers cost?
There, well, there would in that, we'd have to provide.
I don't care how.
Two, well, we'd have. Two, well, we'd have, we'd have to provide two separate contracts for it. Uh, but the the uh construction overview all of that time is gonna be, be the same, uh whether we'd have one or two doing it, so uh I I, just because of the amount of savings, the the percentage being about thirty percent.
Forty-seven thousand dollars.
Being different, my recommendation would would be to go with the the lows. Es- especially because such splits have been done on similar projects.
We have, actually, we got a couple landowners in here that were on those projects on seventy-five. But, yeah, and as far as the road crossing, I guess, that does seem like a pretty good chunk of money, but you said experience-wise, other costs have been additional for the ones that have been open cut?
Yeah, if you uh drive near Taitanka where open cuts were made, um you can see where to, still today, those are over ten years old.
But to Doug's, about in five years from now, you're probably gonna replace box cover and you're gonna still have an open cut because you're not gonna bore that under the road, that's only two hundred feet away. Cause that box cover ain't, isn't in the best shape.
I guess, if it's a landlord, it probably doesn't directly affect us in taxes, but it's still a pretty good chunk of taxes, comes from somewhere. I don't know, I'm just speaking out loud, I guess, but to me, if you're gonna open cut for a box cover that's only a couple hundred feet away, what's the difference?
I mean, if we're talking twenty, thirty thousand in additional work for other stuff, we, we're looking at eighty thousand dollar difference here, so.
North of Sway City, we bore, that was over, that was over a hundred twenty thousand dollars. That was just done this last spring, so it's.
What are, that's not my goal.
You guys got any thoughts to, anything on open cut versus boring? I mean, we'll have to have those figures in secondary road budget if we're moving forward either way, so it's just another.
My first thought is to say, we rely on secondary roads and Doug to take care of our roads. I I guess I'd like to listen somewhat to his recommendation. Um, he's responsible for it, but I'm still kinda with this drainage stuff, so that's just my first thought.
Well, this is, I mean, obviously drainage causing the cut, this isn't drainage, this is what's gonna impact the road for years to come.
Right.
And it's paid for by the secondary roads department entirely. It it's not, uh, none of that cost is built directly to the landowners. It'll be, it'll be paid for by county taxpayers as a whole.
So wasn't, isn't there a fixed price for road crossings and things like that that you provide? It's it's not, you pick the whole thing?
That's sort of like a tile crossing.
This being the drainage district and going through the whole process of public notice, um everything that is required by law, uh roads are obligated to do the road crossing. Uh, the other, what you're referring to, Howard, I believe, is the, uh if a private person uh comes and would like to cross the road and would not like, would not, chooses not to go through the whole process, uh they have, there's a policy.
Well, I would make a motion that we accept the low bid from Reitzel for lateral forty, one-inch coefficient HDP and steel, and then the low bid from Lubenthal for lateral forty-two, one-inch coefficient HDP for um plastic, that one as well.
May I, may I make a statement?
Uh, we need, we need a second on the motion first.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, go ahead Doug.
Um, I believe your specifications say for this project that unit prices will govern. I think it's a, and that's, that's typical in any uh public project that's bid. Errors, they get made, but every contractor understands that. And when you say that unit prices are gonna govern in the specification, which is on page zero zero four one zero dash three, um I think that it's, I I, I think you're walking down a slippery slope.
Tyler and I talked about this in length a couple times. Do you wanna talk about any of this that Matt there's happened before and?
Well, and I.
I know it's happened more than once before, I've been in on projects where it's happened more than once before, and I think there's more than one half there that did show up and was bigger.
Unit prices are supposed to govern.
If you'd end up almost starting over if you wanna take everybody's errors.
Well, that should be, the errors that were found are are shown in there. That's what, we put all the unit prices in there. To Doug's point, the unit prices do rule. I have, I've reached out to a couple of other engineers that I work with about this, was advised to reach out to the contractor about honoring the the lower price and felt that that was an appropriate thing to to consider. But I I do hear what Doug's saying and I, and I recognize as well the uh potential additional expense for a second contract, second consideration for uh completion dates. I can't hardly change what those completion dates are on contractors and one contractor can't start until the other one has made it far enough on the project. So, there would be additional coordinations required. It's a, I I agree with Doug that it, it opens up potentials. However, looking in the financial interest of the district as well, it's difficult to ignore the savings.
It's a huge chunk of money.
How much experience does that contractor have? Has he ever done a main?
Yes, just did another project sixty sub one, which was six, seven hundred thousand dollar project. It was um probably, probably two to three miles of main tile and laterals up along the Minnesota border. Straight north of Sway City, almost the Minnesota border, and then east a couple miles location-wise. And he also did another lateral project, um which was the one I was referencing before with ISG on D seventy-five, Reitzel's had the main tile and one of the laterals, and then he had the other lateral.
Doug, your, your point, explain to me your point about the unit pricing being a slippery slope, tell me what you're talking about.
Well, in the specifications.
I understand that.
Right here, the, the bid items and quantities, part C, bidder must provide the unit price, the total price, any alternate prices, and the total construction cost on the proposal attachment. Part C, bid items, quantities. In case of a discrepancy, the unit price governs, period.
Or what you're saying there, you're worried about he's gonna come back and ask for the three hundred and forty thousand?
No, it's not fair to the other contractors that bid the project when their unit prices are being taken into consideration and another contractor is allowed to change his unit price after the bids are over. That's what I'm saying, part of that. In case of discrepancy, the unit price governs. It's right there in your specifications.
Thank you for that explanation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table, is there any further discussion?
Carry that one, yes, carry that one step further, so do you think we're opening ourselves up to somebody suing us over it, or what are you talking about? I understood the not fair part.
I'm not an attorney. I, but it does, it does state pretty clear, in case of discrepancy, the unit price governs, unit price being bid that day. And that, that's.
I would, what was the motion second?
That's part of the I would deal.
Can I, can I repeat it so that I make sure I have it correctly?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, motion by Stecker and second by Haas to accept the lowest bid from Reitzel excavating for lat forty, one-inch coefficient HPE and steel, and to accept the lowest bid from Zachary Lubenthal excavating, lat forty-two, one-inch coefficient HPE.
And we could add the prices in there, um.
One million eight thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents and one hundred seventy-seven thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars and fifty cents?
Yep.
I apologize if you already covered this, I cussing it out sometimes, but um Kyle, have you spoke to the landowners along this project then? Is this what their desire is?
Yeah, I, I have spoke to a couple of the major landowners, especially on this lateral, and the cost savings to them is not something that they want to ignore.
Does Carter have a copy of this for him to be? It's on the phone. It, this is in our, oh, I missed that.
Yep, it's under the drainage folder.
Oh, okay, very good, I didn't know that.
So Kyle, I don't mind if I, you got a lateral goes through, you didn't speak to me?
I didn't have your phone number, but I think I've talked to the rest of the landowners there.
That's your excuse?
After the last meeting, I came up and asked some questions and uh didn't seem like you wanted the answer, so.
Just ask a question and need a re-answer, and I appreciate you being pardoned to answer. It's information I needed.
Okay.
I have a comment, so, you know, in regards to that being in in the book of the specifications, and it is after the fact of changing the bids, and if it would've been bid accurately, it would not have been the little bit. That's my comment, so that, that little bit is kind of changing what it originally should have been.
That's what it was read as that day, and that was.
And that was. I just, and just trying to go by the, what we have as rules in our book, and I feel that is important to, you know, to maintain some consistency there.
Yeah, I understand there's, this is not the first time there's been a math error on the.
I know, but we gotta worry about right now. And I, I, I wasn't here if there were errors before, that's my. This is now, this is this one, so that, I just wanted to express that.
In the, in the event that the, it was, unit prices ruling, and that is what specs say, the uh tabulated low for that lateral, for that size, is then Reitzel for that same option. So it would be, i- it doesn't enter a third contractor into the mix, it's not included considering someone else. It would go, i- it, the project would then be assigned to one singular contractor.
So is it, is it fair to ask that that, does somebody in the landowners or the contractors, I don't know who's who, and I apologize for not knowing everybody, is, is there a strong opposition to what the motion is on the floor?
I object.
You might say why?
Cause when they're not, there's.
That's your objection, it doesn't follow the specs as laid out in the book, okay?
You wanna ask for the support from landowners? There's a couple others.
I, I'll ask for any comment, move to the issue.
I go through, I'll save money wherever I can, I, I've saved real money cutting the road, I'll save money putting the tile in, I'll save money wherever I can. I listen to you guys in a board meeting all the time, and your budget's always tight, and you wanna save every dime, but then when you actually get here, you wanna spend whatever you can, you go to the highest bid, and I don't underserve the higher bid. I, I, to me, it makes no difference, the project's gonna happen one way or the other, but it is what it is. And I know your contractor said, no, here, you just said he doesn't care, but that's up to you guys, whatever you pull.
You said that?
Yeah, I don't. Stay in the group, I don't care. I want fault and he owns some acres on it.
No, but that's what landowners want.
I think I have the most, I think I have the most acres on this project, I'm pretty sure of it.
Change of the way I bid, it's, there's room for failure.
Yeah, the bid was, I'd be honest with you, the way they bid this, you got so many options in here, I don't know how you bid it, it's kind of crazy. I mean, you got open cuts, you got steel boring, you got different coefficients, you got different tile tapes, you got. And I know I've been in this boardroom before where there's been deficiencies or errors in that bidding and it's been approved after the fact, so this isn't our first time.
Just be those terms, the errors are gonna reflect the unit, the way it's supposed to be. If it was changed for bid, they would, they wouldn't do it.
Correct, yep, I agree with that. So.
It's up to you guys.
Yeah, it's up to you guys.
There's no hard feelings either way. The project's still gonna go through, so it doesn't matter.
I just think the forty-seven thousand dollar difference is something that's significant.
How much is that for acres?
Tyler, you know, how much is a acre on those lateral, on that lateral, I know we didn't have.
I'm sorry, I don't have the figure in front of me.
Marge, do you have the schedule?
No. No.
I thought originally it was like thirty-five hundred, but I don't know.
That might've been for the whole thing.
Annexed at all, I think that's even annexed here.
Could be, I bet it's, I bet it's probably less than a thousand for that lateral, Tyler?
Well, the original acres probably.
Per acre on that?
No, about less than a thousand acres.
Yeah, it's.
So you're probably talking.
Five hundred or or so.
So you're probably talking a hundred bucks an acre? If you do simple math off five hundred acres.
Well, yeah, because it's just a north lateral, so there ain't that many acres, I was talking to total product.
Yeah, no, we're just talking that lateral. If you have five hundred acres, you're talking a hundred dollar an acre. That's, it's a little more than McDonald's breakfast.
Bit for consideration two is that we're talking savings on something that already came in considerably under what the original budget was. So that, that is worth consideration two. We're not, it's not the difference between being below the estimate or not, it's how much below the estimate we're going. It's already significantly under, so. Devil's advocate for the unit prices ruling.
You mentioned them working together at completion date, uh somewhere I read in the old book or whatever that they'd hoped, we hoped to have all this done, so they could've started in the fall. So what is the hoped completion date or what?
The completion date. The completion date on this is set as December first of this year for completion. That would, twenty twenty-five, yeah, that would ensure that only the one season of crop production was disturbed or potentially rundown as a result of this project. I don't see there being room to change that, even if we have two contractors. My, my opinion will be that the whole thing still needs to be done by the first, which.
So with, with the two, I, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that was, I.
So with the two contractors, if, if in this case, if Wrightzel doesn't get, and I have the maps here somewhere, it's hard to find, if he doesn't get to that point until September first, does the other guy come back and say, I didn't anticipate that or?
That, there is potential for that. That is another thing that is opened up when you consider having the two, two contractors. And is something that, as we found out with this year, with rain dates and, and things like that, can be difficult to predict.
I think if we run into a situation like that, we're gonna be dealing with it on both, both lines rather than just one issue. I don't, I don't think that would be a huge issue if they're separated.
What's, what's customary, I mean, if you run into a two thousand twenty-four construction procedure, it's just.
You're gonna, you're gonna order. Number eight days, you're gonna get them bad.
Yeah, you, you do a change order.
That would be my card.
So it's not worth talking about.
He can't control what.
That would be up to our, our decision as a board, we can grant it or not grant it based on whether or whatever.
I understand what you're trying to do though, you know, savings of crop loss twenty-one year, not, not two.
Yep.
All right, any further discussion?
Hearing none. Would anybody like a motion or regret to, for misunderstanding?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, motion by Stecker and second by Haas to accept the low bid from Wrightzel Excavating for lateral forty, one inch coefficient HDPE and steel at one million eight thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents, and to accept the low bid from Zachary Lubenthal Excavating for lat forty-two, one inch coefficient HDPE for one hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you. And can we get a recall vote?
Haas.
Yes.
Garmin. Stecker.
Yes.
Wachter.
Yes.
Matt?
Motion carries three to one with one extension.
Is there anything else you need to say, Tyler?
I don't believe so. We will get working on contracts.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank y'all for coming in.
Thanks. All right, next on our agenda, we're gonna skip over the repair requests, we're doing a few double passes.
I think we should do it quick, it's just one.
All right. I'm not similar, is anyone having any questions on that? Oh, yeah, I got the number two for twenty twenty-five, it's the lap twenty-four, it's green wood, section seven, open tile.
All right, and then a motion for supervisors to take care of the request.
I put it up there.
Looked by Garmin, I'll second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, and now we can move on to our presentation of Walmart. Michelle, we're up to you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. He's gonna wanna come back in.
I don't know why.
He went to grab something.
Oh, okay, okay.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Should I just leave?
Put your copies here.
Okay.
You're starting up here, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Somebody's up here.
You know, I was bringing presents.
Thank you. How's it going today?
Good, how are you?
Bad.
I shall never sign me a, I passed it on me. Thank you. You never know.
Thank you.
Of course.
I got one there.
He's probably.
Disrupts them being sent together.
Yeah, when people put their arms around, steps over, see now they're straightened back out there.
Yeah.
Sometimes they don't, then they just don't form.
Yeah, sometimes they don't match back up again.
All right, I think we're ready whenever you are.
Ready? Okay. Well, good morning, thanks for having me up here again. It's been a hot minute.
It has been. Or cold minute, judging by the weather outside.
Yes, it's very cold. But at least I could get here this time. Last year it took a couple times to get here because it kept snowing.
Yep, yep.
So that's the way I looked at it, I'm like, I was putting my coat on, we're gonna go.
Turn heat up in the car.
Yeah, I did, and I don't like to drive with a coat, like it's just, you know, windy, so I have the heat going, but we're here.
Okay.
All right, well, thanks for inviting me up today. Just gonna talk about your initial renewal rates, what they look like, kind of claim experience we've seen to date, and as I walk through this, most of you know, but for the two of you that I haven't had the opportunity to meet until today, just interrupt, ask questions. If I say something that doesn't make sense to you, please let me know and I'll try to answer the question and if not, I'm not gonna claim to have all the answers, but I'll go back and get your answer and follow up with you guys, so.
Tell me to interrupt, Amy, is there anything in our packet for insurance today?
No, no, we didn't have any of this ahead of time.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Would you like me to scan it in for you quick?
Do you have it though?
Well, I just thought so, I knew what data everyone was on.
Yeah, why don't I run and scan it in? You can start and I'll just go scan this to, to him, so he has something to look at, if that's okay?
Okay, perfect, yes.
I'm pretty sure I've followed the initial rates that Michelle had emailed to me to the board supervisors and to Tammy and Donna.
I remember seeing that email.
Yeah, I went and did.
You get that, okay, I'll, I'll do the other packets then. Okay.
Go ahead, start.
Okay, okay, perfect, we'll do it, thank you. So this first document is just, it's what it says, it's a renewal summary, so it just takes a snapshot in time. So you could look at these numbers today, they could be different, but we have to take a snapshot in time. And what, what we're doing here is just summarizing last period, this period, and the enrollments, the trends, and the claim experience. So just high level, if we look at the enrollment from last year to this year, the number of contracts is down four. The single increased, the family decreased, the overall change was four percent, which is just down a little over three percent, so not really a big change, I mean, you're gonna have fluctuation every year anyway. Then we talk about trend. So we have observed trend, which is what we've seen over the past six months, because we don't have a full year of experience yet, because your plan, your experience runs June thirtieth to July first. Then we have projected trend. We're looking at the current year claims trend at a twelve point nine, twelve point zero nine percent increase, so that's where you, your group is trending. We take trend into consideration when we do the renewal, and right now, based on your group's size and the claims experience you have, we consider your group fifty percent credible. So we take our expectations of a group this size, what we would expect, and that gets fifty percent credibility, and then your actual claim experience gets fifty percent So what does that claim experience looks like? Well, the increase in facility claims this year is a hundred and fifty, almost a hundred and fifty-five percent. There was a claim out there this year that was well over a million dollars. We'll look at that in a little bit. The practitioner claims, so just, you know, going to the doctor, your day-to-day claims are actually down six point eight one percent, which again is a normal fluctuation. You'll see where it says WIPPI claims. You don't have an HMO network, so you're never going to see WIPPI claims unless you would put it at HMO, which we've talked about in the past and I'm not really sure that would work in your area. So, but it's, that's a standard part of our report, so you're always going to see that number there. Your drug claims increase at this point eight point zero eight percent, that's pretty standard, that's kind of where we're at today, and actually you guys are kind of on the low side of drug claims and we'll look at that in a little bit. So there's a lot of good things going on in that arena. But overall, at this point in time, if we take the same incurred and settled dates for twelve-month periods, the experience, the percentage change has been sixty-three point eight six percent. It's a rough year. Hopefully it'll get better the next few months, but right now that's the change that we've seen in your claims. Now that's not your increase, that's just what we've seen in your claim experience, because remember, we're only giving your group fifty percent credibility, so we're taking into account where your claim should have been, and that will, that always helps balance out good years and bad years, because that's really where we'd rather you were instead of these great big peaks and great big valleys, we'd rather keep you leveled out a little bit. So you go to the next page, this is something, for those of you on the board last year who would have seen, the fixed cost review. This just takes your fees that you pay, send yourself funded, that's a portion of what you pay every year. It takes your fees each year, and I'm just mapping it out for you and just showing you the changes, and however neighbor this will help you kind of see where you've been and where, you know, we're going right now. So the administrative fee, that's our cost of doing business, that's what you're paying Walmart to administer your claims. That is going up four point two two percent, it's less than inflation, it's our cost of keeping the doors open. The network access fee, so that's the fee that you pay to access the PPO network, the Walmart PPO network. It's been at six dollars and ninety-five cents since at least twenty twenty-one, and I believe it's been, it was four or five years before that, it has been that for a long time. The PBM fee, so again, that's to access our PBM, so our prescription manager, that again, that fee has been a dollar ten for a long time. The individual stop loss, last year we changed it to seventy-five thousand dollars to help accommodate, so you'll notice that that went from eight eighty-four down to five twenty-four. That was the savings to go from the twenty twenty-three stop loss amount to the seventy-five thousand stop loss amount. So this year we're looking at fourteen point three two percent increase in that stop loss fee. The aggregate stop loss fee is same as same, that is not changing. So overall, the fixed costs are increasing thirteen percent. The expected claims adjustment, we're looking at eight point eight six percent, the suggested rate adjustment is ten point one nine percent. That is what we would consider your renewal increase at this point, it's ten point one nine. Now again, and Kyle, I know you're very familiar with this, but you guys set the rates, so that's why it always says suggested, because based on what we projected claims and fees, that's what our rate increase we would suggest that you put into place. But again, that's completely up to the board on how they set the rates and how they set employee contributions. So all of that makes sense? Okay. So again, at the top of this next page, you're gonna see where it says self-funded initial renewal rates. When we get closer to your seven-one renewal, you will get final rates. These are just initial rates because we only have six months of claim experience to provide you with. Looking at this, it, this is a summary of all the details that we just went through. The one thing you are gonna see on here is your PBM rebate credit buyback. This is what you put into place last year, where you got the one hundred dollars per contract per month off of your fixed fees, end of story, without rebates, so you knew you were guaranteed that amount of money each month. So that is there, you'll see it reflected, and it's always gonna be taken into consideration on your bottom line.
Do you have reports or will there be reports coming up of how that rebate is performing or what it would have been if we'd have stayed the previous route instead of making a change?
We will have those available, probably not till later this summer.
Okay.
Hopefully before your renewal.
Okay, if we could get those.
Yep, as soon as they're available. I can definitely get those to you. Yeah, no, we know everybody's gonna wanna see, do we make the right decision? And, you know, as we talked about when you made this decision, you can change it next year.
And that's why I'd like to see it.
Yep, yep, absolutely. Completely understand.
If I, if I remember right, our last couple quarters were higher than a hundred dollars, but the previous ones were below, so our average was below.
Right, right.
I'd like to see how that performs.
Absolutely, nope. That is, as soon as it's available, and again, I don't have an exact date, they've just kind of given us somewhere.
Yep.
Let me make a quick note, just so I make sure I do that for you. Sometimes you'll hear me refer to this as an ear report, I try not to, because usually everybody goes, what? But it's your executive annual report. This report, I could spend hours on, I am going, rest assured, I won't. I'm just gonna hit the highlights and then feel free to go through this, gather out, you know, other pieces that you wanna look at, but this report is great, it has so much information in here. So if we take a look at just page three, if you open this up, here's what I think is kind of hitting me in the face, I mean, it's, it's very apparent, your current allowed per member per year charges are seventeen thousand fifty dollars. Your current allowed per member per year charges are $17,050. That's up 55% from the previous period. And it's 133% higher than what we expected to be.
Can you just, just help me out, where are you seeing that in?
Page three.
Well, I think I'm right there.
Yep, I'm sorry.
Power, yes, I.
Right across the top.
Yep, you're right there.
Yep, you good?
Michelle, I know this is kind of jumping around, but when we get to high-cost claimants, it'll be there. The, the one at the top of the list, do we have any numbers of how much that one factors into this?
There was $1.9 million.
Yeah, so.
That claimant is no longer on.
The plan, yep.
Yeah, it was a co-burned person. So they're, they're off the plan.
But if, and, and I could probably get to the math eventually, but if that was not, and it won't be going forward since the status is canceled. But if that wasn't there, where would we be at?
I mean, your next claimant's over half a million, too. I mean, without those two, you know, that's a huge difference. I don't, I haven't done the math.
Yep.
But it, it would make obviously a significant difference, I'm sure. Yes.
With an Olympic scoring, you don't throw out the I in the low.
That would be nice, wouldn't it?
So what, what is this current allowed per member per year? That's what it divided out to be?
Yep, yep.
Somebody used that terminology belly button or per member. So it's per employee when you say member?
Per, per member is a belly button.
Okay, alright.
Per contract is just that, whether it's single or family, it counts as one.
Okay.
Yes, yep. So yeah, if you look at like your inpatient charges, allowed PMPY from last year, it was $557. This year, $7,443. The benchmark is $1,000. The outpatient charges, same thing. Huge increase. The office visits, though, have actually went down from the previous year on the PMPY. And they're nearing what we would consider the benchmark. So the right things are going. There were just unfortunately, a lot of hospitalizations with very high bills this year. And we'll, we'll look at that as we get farther into this report. So if you turn to the next page, page four, just one thing I want to note is that your health and pharmacy claims paid per member per year increased 48.6% from the prior period. And you can see that in your chart there over to the right. On page five, just some interesting notes that I like to point out is the employee average age is 50.4. That's older than the benchmark of 45. However, because you have a lot of family contracts, the overall age is 36.3 compared to the benchmarks, 34.9. So again, we're closer to the benchmark, because the families are bringing it down. So, and we, it completely makes sense, because if you go to the bottom of that paragraph on page five, in the current period, the average family size was 2.7, which is higher than the benchmark of 2.0. So you do have some dependent children, meaning the average age down, which is good. It's getting you closer to where we would expect claims to be. If you turn to page seven, and again, like I said, I'm not going to go through this whole report. If you go to page seven, so we talked about you pay that fixed fee of $6.95 to access the PPO network, to access Wellmark's network. You as a group saved 33.8% in healthcare claims by utilizing the network and our network discounts. The network utilization was 99.9%. So everybody's using PPO doctors, that's great. Our benchmark is 97.6%. You're above that, the right things are happening. People are using PPO doctors, so you're getting the discounts that are available. If you go to page eight, this is something I know we hit on last year, and it's kind of, is the same thing is happening this year. So in the current period, 70, a little over 70% of members had no claims or claims paid less than $2,500. The remaining, basically 30%, accounted for 96.3% of the claims. So last year, there were three members with claims greater than $100,000, and they accounted for 44.5% of the claims. This year, there were seven members with claims greater than $100,000, and they accounted for 63.7% of your claims. So seven people accounted for two, almost two-thirds of your claims.
Is that normal?
We usually look at about the 80/20 rule. The seven claimants over $100,000 for a group your size, that's pretty high. The three was more average than you had in the prior period. If you go to page 10, I know this is something we talked about a little bit last year, you increase some deductibles, you know, where is that getting us? The current member cost share paid was 3.8%. The benchmark is 14.9% is what Wellmark standard is, what people would pay out of pocket, how much, you know, what percentage. But because you have such a low percentage of people under $2,500 in claims, you're not reaching that 14%. So that's why the difference.
Hold up there, I'm not sure. First off, I'm not sure, number one thing is that I may not understand. But number two, your cost share, if you've got big claims, your cost share, the members' cost share would go down. And that's what would cause a large part of that. And you know, you're done sharing costs after you get to a certain point.
Your percentage is going down, correct, correct.
Yeah, so you, you used to treat something else, though.
Well, there aren't a large number of people utilizing claims over $2,500 either.
So they're paying a large share of cost share.
There's, some of them are paying, a lot of them are paying nothing, because they're not even hitting to hit cost share.
They're paying nothing, or you're paying nothing?
The members paying nothing, because they're, they don't even have claims, or they have claims under $2,500.
So possibly I'm missing something.
So if, if you had, and, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but if you had 100 people, they all spent $1,000, because their deductible was $2,000, and every one of them spent $1,000, and they were done there, it'd be 100% member paid.
Right, that's their cost share.
But if you have one member that spends $100,000, and everybody else spent zero, you've only got $1,000 paid. So your percentage drops, drops the high things on one individual, because the rest is paid for by the county up to, above the deductible, up to the stop loss, and then part of it.
Well, you're not wrong. It's a combination of both. I mean, you're completely right. The high claimants are paying a lower percentage, but there's a lower number of those high claimants, I mean, compared to the general population. And when you have 70% of the people that have claims under $2,500, they're just not paying very much. And so then the overall percentage is a lot less than the 14%. It's a combination of both. Like I said, your, your point completely valid.
It's not important, I guess it's not important.
Well, it isn't important. I mean, what, I want you to understand, I want it to make sense to you.
It's fine.
Okay. Okay, so if we go to page 13, so this is where you're going to see the diagnosis category. The number one diagnosis category, it's an unmapped code. The reason it's an unmapped code is because when that claim came in, we negotiated a fee, just a lump sum payment for that claim, which could have been significantly higher had we not. So once they do that, that claim no longer has like all the codes to it. It becomes a lump sum payment. They call it a lump sum negotiated fee. And so all of the codes drop off of it, because you can't code it anymore when they put it in a package. So that's why you're not gonna see that, but that's what that claim is, that first one there. And that claim alone accounted for 20% of the allowed charges. Worth defects were 17% of the allowed charges. Those are line N, as in Nancy. You can see that the PMPY on that was $2,751 compared to the benchmark of 61. Another high PMPY would be benign or cancerous tumors at $1,494 compared to the benchmark of 461. And then to go right along with that is chemo and aftercare, current a 14, a little over $1,400, the benchmark of $150. So those are your highest diagnosis categories for this year, at least in the first six months of the year. And again, the plan year, not the calendar year. If you turn to page 15, the admits per thousand increased 33.3%, and that's 11.1% above the benchmark. And then the allowed per admit increased 885%. It was 511% above the benchmark. So if you look at the bottom chart, where it says allowed charges per admit, your surgical charges, the average was $196,009. The benchmark is $34,000. And then the total on the admit, that average was $184,000, the benchmark of $30,000. So once people were admitted, the costs were, you know, a lot higher than the current benchmark, too. So not only were the admits higher, then the costs in the hospital were higher. Do you wanna go to page 18? This was something I thought was good news. The ER visits per thousand actually decreased 4.5%. And they're 11.2% below the benchmark. That tells me people are not using the ER or an office visit. That's great, that's, it's being utilized as it should be. I think that's great news. Allowed per visit actually increased 2.5% or 4%, excuse me, but it's still 10.9% lower than the benchmark. The member liability for the ER visit was $303. That is below the benchmark of 473. So people are still paying less than the benchmark by utilizing the ER as it should be. So I think, you know, that's a give and take there. If you go to page 23, so page 23, we're talking about office visits. So we kind of talked about those a little bit before. Those are really leveling off, where the office allowed per member per year decreased 41.9%, but it's sitting at 32.1% above the benchmark. So those allowed charges are actually decreasing. They're still high, but they're decreasing. And the visits per thousand increased 2.9%, and they're right at benchmark. So again, office visits going well, ER going well. So there's darn hospitalizations. If we go to page 27, so let's talk about the pharmacy a little bit. We touched on that just a little bit earlier. This is what I think is great. Your drug costs actually accounted for 7.2% of the allowed per member per year. Our benchmark is right now at 25%. So people are using generics. I think that's, that's incredible. I, I don't see this very often. The top medications were Dupixent, which actually is used for atopic dermatitis. In case, I'm not sure everyone's familiar with all of these drugs. Rinvok, which is for arthritis, and Eliquis, which is a blood thinner. Those three are obviously still name brand. That's why they're going to be, you know, one of your most expensive prescriptions also. If you turn the page to page 29, it will show you your top 20 prescription drugs. So you'll see your Dupixent, Rinvok, Eliquis, Jolzans, which again is for arthritis, Ozempic and Monjaro, which are diabetic, Humira, and diabetic, Jordians diabetic. Sorry, Sebaflex Touch is a monitor, it's diabetic. And then this will also show you the number of claimants and how many prescriptions. So your highest number of prescriptions are for your amphetamines. That's for ADD and ADHD treatment. So high number of prescriptions, paid per script, pretty low at $85, so, compared to some of the other prescriptions. I know I touched on a lot of different things in there. Anything, any other questions as I went through there that you would like me to address at this point? If not, we'll look at your high-cost claimant summary. And Kyle, I know you kind of noticed a couple of items on here, but the highest cost claimant and the second highest cost claimant, both of those are now in a canceled status. So they are no longer a part of your plan. So we will no longer see, I mean, there could be some run-out claims. I'm not sure when they cancel. But as of now, they won't be incurring any additional claims. There were.
How do you guys take that into account for the renewal factors?
That would be taken into account if there are no additional claims. And we know that those will no longer exist. Yep, nope, that's taken into account. Now, in between now and your final rates, your final suggested rates, if any of these additional members would leave the plan, that would be taken into consideration also. So there were actually nine claimants that hit above the $75,000 mark. So after that, those claims were pulled. So, after that, those claims were ruled. And that is not in the plan's responsibility. That goes on to Wellmark's responsibility with your spec insurance. Because that's why you have your individual stop loss coverage and your aggregate stop loss coverage. All of the, the remaining seven of those, at least as of when this report was run, are still active though. So, they could incur more claims. We, we don't know at this point. And then when we ran this report, this was just all of the claims above ten thousand dollars. The thing I did notice, and I don't see this a lot either, is only one of these high cost claimants, like in, on the first page out of your, the nine that are over your spec, has a significant amount of prescription claims. Typically, we see that higher where, you know, at least two or three of these would have significant pharmacy claims. So, hence, that explains why your pharmacy claims are low. They're just, it's all hospitalizations and what's happening in the hospital. It's not anybody on high cost drugs. Additional questions? I know it's a lot of information.
While we were going through the other stuff, I did the math on the total for the high cost claimant summary. It's four point six million. So, we got-
I apologize. I shut it off.
But even just in those, those top two that are canceled, we've got two and a half million that are in canceled status.
Yeah, I mean, those two alone coming off of their, I know made a huge difference for just your initial suggested rates at ten percent. If those two would have been ongoing, it could have, you know, the claims projections would have been a lot higher, which in turn then increases your, you know, rate suggestions. And again, these are initial rates as always. And they're always suggested. We will have final rates. I believe they usually come in May. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
So, I will be back up here at least then, if not before. You know, if there's something, you know, we want to look at again. I know last year we talked, you know, kind of threw around a high deductible health plan.
Did we get any numbers for that this year? Any rate suggestion for high deductible plan options?
I didn't. I didn't know where that landed. I can definitely get some. We know, you know, what kind of out of pocket max is and, and what you want to look at. We can, we can definitely do that. You know, if the board decides it's something we want to do, we can start that education process like we talked about. I think that's key. Is, you know, we, we have to hold, we have to either hold meetings. I have to come up here for a day or two and just sit in a room so people will come in and ask questions. But we need to have that support to say, hey, go ask questions. This is what we're going to do. Michelle's here.
I think if I remember right, can we have a separate enrollment? If we do a high deductible plan option, that would be for starting with calendar year. Like twenty twenty-six, we could do an enrollment in the fall.
You could do special enrollment.
So, we'd have time to do education between now and then, rather than saying everyone has to flip the switch now for something in the middle of summer. And then you'd fill out the deductible for this calendar year and could transition after that.
Right. So, that you're, it would start the calendar year.
Yeah. Instead of hitting your deductible in April and then having a new deductible in July and having to hit a deductible again type thing. I thought we had talked about that.
Michelle, would you be able to tell the board supervisors if, if they were purchasing health insurance per member from Wellmark, what the premium would be for those policies?
Like off the exchange?
Well, if we were just, if we were just, instead of being self-funded, if we were just purchasing-
If you were fully insured?
If we were just insured with Wellmark, using the same terms as what we have right now.
Well, it would be different for each person based on their age.
No, I'm just talking about if Cassoot County as a whole.
Oh, fully insured.
Cassoot County as a whole, if we were paying Wellmark instead of-
Self-funded?
For the, instead of being self-funded.
I can get you a fully insured quote. It's going to be more.
Can you get one for that? Is there any differences to the benchmark? I know we talked about the stop loss for groups of our size. We're at seventy-five thousand. What about like other deductibles and stuff like that of the average for groups our size for an entire plan?
Yeah, for groups your size, I mean, your deductible is still low and your out of pocket is still low. I know you just increased it last year, but you're still low. Which we see that when we look at benchmark of, you know, we look at people paying about fifteen percent of their healthcare costs. Right now, your members are paying, what was it, three point eight?
Three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's still low. The individual stop loss, moving to seventy-five was about, that's about where we would expect a group your size to be.
Yep.
I, I mean, I think you're there now.
Which if we changed to fully insured, that would be part of the equation?
Right. That's not part of the equation. However, that is where, when we underwrite fully insured groups, and I think we talked about this too, and we switched to seventy-five, Kyle, is that when we underwrite fully insured groups, that's where we take into consideration those claims still. When we look at a fully insured book of experience, we still say, okay, they hit that, what we call is a pooling point. Again, the claims are still the claims, but we kind of, we look at that because you can't attribute the whole one point nine million dollars to your fully insured base. You still have to take that into consideration, some type of pooling point level. And that's what we use for our fully insured book of business is seventy-five thousand. So, yes, it would change because it's not technically there. But when the underwriter looks at it, it's still part of the equation. But yes, I can definitely get fully insured rates. Do you want me to look at for self-funded and fully insured? Like where more in line with our benchmark for deductible and out of pocket?
What I would like to see is what? Just a premium for a deductible per person, per family, similar to what we have here for-
Okay.
A deductible, out of pocket maximum, something to compare to this.
Okay. Yep. I can do that.
I think a comparison to your average book of business would be good too.
Okay. And I can do that. I can run for both fully insured and self-funded for kind of where our benchmarks would be for a group this size, and I can run a vote. And then you can compare both fully insured and self-funded apples to apples. You know, with the same, both what you have today and more in line with the benchmark. So, yes, I can do both of that.
What is the legal? I think when we talked about high deductible plans last year, I thought you said the legal minimum or whatever for that was going up. What is that now?
Just changed in twenty twenty-five.
So, I thought you said that they're changing.
Yeah, it changes every year. I want to say, don't hold me to this. I think single is thirty-five hundred or thirty-six hundred. And family, seventy-two hundred maybe? To be considered a high deductible health plan and to qualify for an HSA. Yes. Yes. Otherwise, it's just a health plan with a big deductible.
So, I heard, I heard, excuse me, but I heard, I heard you guys talking about this last year when I started watching. And material I see disagrees with that like vehemently. Like I, like fifteen hundred, twenty, I mean, I heard what you said last year, and then I saw it in writing in some material I had. And I looked it up on the internet. I just, I just Googled high deductible health plan. And it was nowhere near that kind of number. Is it something that is indigenous to what we're doing here, or are you saying that's the government limit?
That's a qualifying health, that's a qualified health, high deductible health plan.
I'm not the best operator in the world, but like I said, when I looked that up last year, when you guys were talking about it, it, it-
Actually, yeah, what I see here for twenty, and this is the AI overview real quick on Google. But it does say, minimum deductible for self-only is sixteen fifty and minimum for family is thirty-three hundred.
Last year, I think it was like fifteen hundred, three thousand, whatever. The numbers you were throwing around, and I'm, I'm not, it's just, it's just something that I just read recently. So, when I, when I saw that, it didn't jive.
And obviously, I think the lower that number is, the easier that would be or more likely to be considered too by anyone. If it still qualifies for the HSA and all that stuff.
Let me get you those numbers.
Okay. Yeah, then.
I'll get those numbers, to be sure. And then, because we have all of that information.
Yep.
Yep.
And whenever you get those numbers for whatever the requirements are for it to be eligible for age, just some stuff, can we get a vote for what that would look like?
Yep.
Would it be safe to say, not short circuiting any process, but would it be safe to say that employers usually try to herd the membership into, if, if you offer them, don't they try to herd them through financial incentives and everything? And there would have to be something in place. It's all hypothetical. I'm not suggesting too many of this, but there had to be something in place to make what you have already more expensive in order to, to herd it that way.
Employers usually make what they have more expensive.
Excuse my choice of the word herd.
No, no.
Direct.
Direct. Well, you're incentivizing people, is what you're doing. Or you make the premium for the high deductible health plan lower.
Right.
You know, so that your monthly output cost is lower. Especially the first year, people are nervous because, you know, let's say they have a two thousand dollar single deductible. And it's like, how am I going to come up with that money? Well, if, you know, they match contributions. So, if I as the employee, you know, my premium's less expensive than if I'm going to the plan I have today. Well, then I should take that additional premium that I'm saving and put that towards my HSA. And let's say I contribute a thousand dollars to my HSA. So, seventy-five, eighty dollars a month, whatever that comes out to. And then let the employer match that. So, there's my two thousand dollars in there for my deductible. And then it's not as scary to come up with that amount of money. And then after the first year, it's there. And then the next, you know, if I don't have to use it, then I just keep building that. And that's the nice thing also, then that goes with you. If you would leave this employer, you reach out, whatever, it's not a use it or lose it like an FSA.
It's, it's your money.
Yep, it's your money. Yep. Yep. Absolutely. It's your money. Yeah, it's just another savings vehicle. But yes, you, you need to offer an incentive typically for people.
Again, short circuiting the process, but unless, unless it costs more than what it does now, it's probably going to be pretty hard to do that probably. But anyway, okay, anyway, not necessarily. What about here, you have member and you have family. There's no, some experience I've had, you've got member, you've got member family, you've got members spouse, you've got members spouse and family. What about, is that just something you decided you didn't want to explore in the past or, or?
We, that was another thing we talked about last year. We're on two tier rates, which is single or family options. Otherwise, there's a four tier rates. And it's single, employee plus spouse, employee plus children and full family. And that's just a board decision. We can, we can do two or four, or we can look at rates both ways or whatever. But we did discuss that something last year.
If it changed, if it changed like that would, I'm sorry.
The costs that are projected in your initial rates would not change.
Correct. The bottom line isn't going to change. It's just going to be distributed differently over three or four tiers. Yes, bottom line, claims are still going to be the claims. It's just going to be, how is it distributed in a suggested rate, whether it's two tier or four tier? And basically, what you're going to find is your single's going to stay about the same. Your family's going to increase because it's going to be a true family. And then your other two tiers will be somewhere in the middle. So, the distribution of dollars will just look different, but the bottom line stays the same. But yes, I mean, that could be more attractive to people.
It's going to be more attractive for some and less attractive for others.
Right.
Doesn't that bring, you have to think about that too.
When you only have such a small percentage of the people generating the most cost of insurance, the people that are, have very little, very little healthcare expenses are contributing to the people that have a lot of healthcare expenses.
Flip side, flip side of that is when, when the employer's paying, you know, you, you, in the same breath, you like employees with long-term experience. You like experience. So, it's worth it to give it to a certain extent. It's a tough subject.
It is. I mean, there's a lot of decisions, a lot of different options.
So, without thinking it through, if you offered a high deductible, I'll say it's a common plan. and I, there's fifteen different ways to look at that too, but is that, would you perceive that, uh, it, it's still gonna cost the same, but just who's gonna pay for it? Or is, I'm not sure, ask, I'm not sure I'm asking the question, or, I'm sorry.
Well, I think one of the things with that high deductible, um, pardon, correct me if I'm wrong, but when people enrolled in that, they take a little bit more, um, they take more ownership, and the idea is that since they may be paying more for that healthcare, they may choose, make choices differently.
Correct.
Plus the data, but the data we've gone through would suggest that we're making good decisions already. Wouldn't agree with that, or is that wrong?
It may or may not be. I mean, I think, I, yes, but it might, and, until you look at every individual claim, I, I don't think we can blanket statement, however, if somebody's making some right decisions, yes. Now, would we get more towards the fourteen point whatever percent of, you know, me as the employee paying my percentage, yes, by going to a high deductible health plan? Um, because I'm going to pay more first dollar coverages than I do today.
It, 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 it's easy to talk about if you're healthy and it's, it's, it's hard to talk about if you're not. It's just, you know, if you're, if you're out there and you're, you know, you're twenty-nine-year-old husband and wife or you have members, a member and spouse, and you don't spend any money at all, it looks great. Then when things start happening, then it changes.
But depending on how you price it, you can also look at, in the end, I mean, it can save a significant amount of money. Um, you know, right now, let's see what we have for out-of-pocket max, only fifteen hundred dollars. But, um, you know, and depending on what, you know, you would do with this plan or whatever. Um, like in, in my case right now at Wellmark, I have the high deductible health plan for my personal plan.
Me too.
I wish I was twenty-nine, but I'm not. So, um, but I know my maximum every year. You know, because if I had Wellmark's other plan, my maximum could be ten thousand dollars because I could keep paying that twenty percent till there's no tomorrow on an eighty-twenty plan, where I know as an individual, my maximum out-of-pocket is four thousand dollars a year. Once I hit that, I don't pay anything else until we hit January again, so at least I know what my maximum is. So it's, again, there's, there's two sides to that pancake, and yes, it can be scary, but education, get past the scary and say, okay, look, if I know I'm gonna pay this and my rates are this much lower, then I'm kinda taking the chance and say, well, might have to pay four thousand, but maybe I won't, and then I just save that amount of money. So.
And in our case, in the county's case, you, you get, you get to change every year too, right? You go back, one, you're not committed to it.
No. No, I mean, every year on open enrollment, you talk to the member's standpoint, right? Yeah, every year from a member's standpoint, they could go back and forth if they wanted. Typically, once people go with a high deductible health plan and they get comfortable with it, they get past that first year of, am I gonna have to come up with two thousand dollars or whatever it is? And then that money's there, then it's comfortable because it's like, well, I got that in my back pocket, figuratively speaking, if I need it. But yes, it can be scary. I agree. It's like anything, there, there are positives and negatives and.
Yep. And one of the things we talked about last year in that high deductible category was, um, I had talked with Joe Carter at Health Loan Schools, and they have three plan options, but the way they structure it is they take the difference of the premium from the lowest cost option and, um, the difference in premium to the next level and then continue that on. They contribute the difference from the typical plan, like the plan we have now versus it's comparable of a high deductible, the difference in premiums, say you save a hundred and fifty bucks a month. As the employer, they contribute that same dollar amount to the employee's HSA, so their total cost as an operation is the same regardless of which plan the employee takes. Um, it's just you have control as the employee of, do your dollars go towards premium? Or do your dollars go towards premium plus an HSA, which you have control over? And that's just one of several options, but there right here in town also do have the tax dollars. They have not had a, much of a rate change at all in four years. And that was last year, when I was digging through the numbers, um, so.
So how does that jive with your statement, and I'm probably jumping across three separate issues, but how does that jive with your statement? Somebody's gotta pay the bill, you know, these are, these are your claim costs.
I don't know if there'd be a way to correlate that at all.
I don't, I don't know.
There's, there's plenty of places. I, I, I hear, I, I heard you guys talking about the education last year, and a certain amount of people think it's a lot of work and maybe insurmountable or whatever, but people or organizations are certainly doing it, it's happening.
Right.
Well, and the, you know, and I think the nice thing, the thing that I appreciate, I guess, from a high deductible health plan is your preventive care is still covered at a hundred percent. And, you know, the government still allows that, so that's the nice thing. We're not discouraging people from going to the doctor for their preventive care.
I agree, I think that's important.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I would, you wouldn't wanna discourage that ever.
Right. It's not like you're saving ten bucks because you're not preventing something.
Right.
And then it costs a thousand dollars later.
Exactly, exactly. You can still go, you know, for your preventive care and there's, there's still zero cost.
Yep.
I mean, any other thoughts or ideas that anyone has come up with, um, that you want me to investigate while we're doing this type of coding?
I know, I know, I'm not gonna pin you down, but just in general, if, if you, if, if, and I'm not suggesting this is what's gonna happen, but if everybody went to a high deductible plan, that would lower the cost in general?
In theory, it should.
Okay.
But again, I, I don't know who's gonna get sick, I don't know who's going to.
Kyle's example, he was giving, if there was a savings, you were giving it all away to the, to the HSA, matching HSA?
Yeah, and that was a, that was a comparative example, um, and by that product, it is a standard for people to switch.
Right.
And it's incentivizing switching at the same time as maintaining.
So why do you wanna incentivize them? At that point, you're saying that the county, in our case, the employer's share or the employer's cost would go down?
Based on claims, not what you're paying upfront.
So what's the advantage of, of asking them to switch then if, if, uh, or incentivizing them is the better way to put it, to switch to a high deductible? If, if the employer's cost between the premium and the contribution stays the same, why are you trying to incentivize them one way or another?
Because, well, I don't know if you would have a great suggestion for the, or response to this as a whole, what you see from your customers, but, the incentive there would be, if you, if you would be in that category hypothetically of someone who doesn't go to the doctor at all, or only when it's critically needed, if you had complete control of those dollars that you were spending, hypothetically, you could, you could have that contributed to your HSA for a year, two, three, four, five years, and instead of that money going to the insurance company to pay the premium, you would have that control that which then can, um, be used directly to pay for your healthcare costs. So it would be a new benefit if you were able to bank it for a period of time.
Yeah, and I have personal experience doing that, uh, and, and doing that, but if it's, what I'm hearing, and maybe I'm hearing it wrong, but it, it, so if, if the, if the healthy, younger people see that as an advantage, I just, look, I put healthy and younger together.
Not always, not always.
Not always the case, obviously, uh, but, you know, so they're gonna do the HSA, and then these other costs are gonna have to be, in, in general, the un, the older unhealthy people or, or the older who spend more on healthcare, uh, somebody's, somebody's gotta pay that bill. I, I don't understand where the, where the cost savings are, other than it might be the, 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 the people who are using it or, or paying for it.
Well, let's say I am that young, healthy person.
Yes.
And I go to the doctor, I don't know, twice a year, because, I don't know, I get a sinus infection or something. So I still have to go, but I'm young and healthy. Well, right now, when I go to the doctor, I pay zero office visit co-pay. Okay?
That's what it is, I have.
Yes, if I'm under.
I have no co-pay.
Yep. If I'm on a high deductible health plan, that office visit's gonna cost me about a hundred and thirty dollars.
Right.
So right there, um, that healthy person saved the plan two hundred and sixty dollars because I went to the doctor twice a year. I mean, just, that's a small example, but I'm just trying to, you know.
But in the, saved the plan that, but we gave him that two hundred and sixty dollars.
Well, no, because in, in Kyle's example, you're still gonna give them the same amount, whether you give it to them to pay the whole premium of this other plan or you give it to them just to put in their HSA. So you're still, but you're saving the money on, in the way you're suggesting it be structured, or the example you've gave. The money that you're saving is in claims dollars, it's not going to be in your fixed upfront premium cost. It's gonna be in your bottom dollar claims cost, because there, that person didn't cost the plan two hundred and sixty dollars.
So you don't report those costs, I mean, those costs are in those numbers if you don't pay them? So at two hundred and sixty dollars, you're gonna, you're gonna send out an EOB and say, okay, here was the thing, you know, because of your plan, you pay a hundred and thirty dollars, but you don't report that hundred and thirty dollars into your?
Not as claims cost to the plan.
Yep. So in, and I'm gonna draw a number just for the example's sake, but in the example, I was saying, if we were contributing a hundred dollars a month to an employee's HSA and they went to the doctor twice and spent two hundred and sixty dollars, over the course of the year, we would've contributed twelve hundred.
Yeah.
But you would, out of that twelve hundred, you'd spend two sixty, so you'd have a short thousand dollars in your HSA at the end of the year, so that would be a.
I hope you're saying it's for somebody else's management, not mine.
No, I'm just an example of whoever it fit.
I don't have a lot of experience in, in the HSA, but is there a, do you have to have spent by a certain time?
No.
Is there, there's no, it's just, is it just in?
There's, it's not a use it or lose it, it's always your money.
Isn't it when you get to sixty-five or a certain age, you can spend it on?
Medicare premiums?
Yeah, you can spend it on a lot more, more things.
You can even go backwards if you have receipts and didn't use it, you go backwards.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think you can also, like, and I'm not an expert in all this, but I think you can invest it in a form of CDs or other things where they're interest earning, but then that interest still stays in your HSA.
Based on, yeah, where your money is, like if you use the local bank and they add that up, and usually they require a minimum of maybe like two or three thousand dollars in your HSA, and I think each saving institution is different, but yes, you do have investment options at some point.
Yep.
Correct.
And, and really, when you're looking at those, or when, for me, when I'm looking at those options, drawing out an example like today, okay, you can kinda follow it, but it's a lot easier to wrap your head around when you're looking at actual numbers, like quotes, and say, okay, this one cost, say their suggested rate for a single plan is nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. Well, if the other HSA says nine hundred, you've only got seventy-nine dollars and twenty-four cents to work with. If it says six hundred, you got three hundred and seventy, seventy-nine dollars to work with. So where your actual quotes come in varies, um, how much difference there is, obviously. So that's where I see more value in actually comparing numbers and numbers that are real for our situation rather than just hypotheticals.
Yep, and I can get you, I mean, I'll, I'll provide that to you, real numbers.
Yeah.
You know, and I think if a high deductible health plan is, you know, something we seriously want to consider again, you know, let's put together some examples, um, you know, I can put something together that says, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, Mary Smith, and these are my claims this year. If I was on the high deductible health plan, this is what I'm gonna pay. You know, and show now, you know, the other thing we're up against, is we have an out-of-pocket max of fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
I, it just, it's, it's not gonna work with this.
It's a very low threshold.
Yeah, because the max I'm gonna pay right here is sixteen hundred dollars.
That's why, I mean, this is not about me, but that's why I said it an hour ago, unless you're gonna change something drastic, it is gonna be no attract.
Yeah, I mean, this is, and we've talked about this in the past, I mean, I would love to be on this plan, I mean, this is amazing. But it, you know.
And that's where if we compare to the benchmark of the group for both of those, that would bring things.
Right.
A, a bigger difference.
I mean, there is no doubt, this is an incredibly rich plan in twenty twenty-five.
So we question in, in making any changes or whatever, are we, I know you talked about giving some different information to us, and are we late in the game for that? I'm just asking, because of budget purposes, you know, was it being middle of January, like will this, because that's a big piece of the, the puzzle, are we kind of late in changing, is it?
What's your expected timeline for getting more quotes to us?
I'll have those back in a week.
Okay. And obviously, you guys chime in with your thoughts, but my thought would be using what we have here as conversations, whether it's the rest of today or into next week, but then we could also look at comparisons and at least we would have this as a starting point and know what our options and plan is, um, directed toward moving forward. But if we can look at cost savings, um, then we would have other options on the table if we need to look at that.
Do you need, would you like me to bring the quotes up? Do you want me to just send them? What would you, what do you wanna do?
For all the discussion we had here, I think it'd probably be better if you were here, that's.
And that's fine. I have no issue with that whatsoever, I just need, you know, so I can get it on my calendar. That's not a problem, you guys know I don't mind.
Yep.
And you can do that by next Tuesday?
I should be able to. I should, yeah, I'll get these quotes ordered, I'll call my, one of my team members on the way home, and I'll have her get these quotes in right away, um, so they don't even have to wait till tomorrow.
Perfect.
And if she gets them started, that'll help, um, it's just deductible changes, those don't take us long to get back as if, you know, you were saying, let's change this benefit or this benefit, deductible changes. Um, when I go to the benchmark, I mean, I am, I'm gonna go to our true benchmark, I'm gonna put co-pays and office visits, I'm gonna put, you know, co-pays on some things. you know, co-pays on some things that you don't have today, is that okay? I mean, do you want me to go to a true benchmark plan?
I would say, yes, we should look at it. I'm not saying that's what we change our.
No, I know, but I mean, do you wanna truly look at like kind of where our benchmark plan is today?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that's right. No, I know you're not necessarily gonna go to that, but I mean, is that what you wanna look at?
I don't even know enough to be dangerous here.
What, yeah, I guess we need to, I mean, are you asking for a high deductible health plan benchmark? Or are you looking at different plans as we have today? I think to give Michelle guidance.
Yeah, that's right, too. You can't just say you wanna consider everything, you gotta decide what, get your real.
Be more specific, I mean, 'cause I can go a hundred different ways.
Right.
Yeah, we'd probably go a thousand different ways.
Well, that's, yes.
Yeah. So so when you look at the county, the county's cost, simplify this for me, and it's probably here in black and white, and I can't see it, but the county's cost, and you're talking fiscal year cost?
Yep.
Okay, when you're, and what is it per employee, per whatever in this fiscal year, and what's it gonna be next year? Is that your, is it here somewhere?
Right now, it's eighteen twenty-five or eighteen seventy-five, plus the two fifty from the employees for families.
I'm looking at that, yeah. And what's it gonna be if we don't do it?
Well, if we just look at the estimated suggested rates, we are estimating with claims and fees, a single would be nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars, and a family, twenty-four forty-eight.
And what is it this year?
It's eighteen twenty-five for a family.
That's what we'll talk about later, I guess, that right now, we don't.
'Cause that's.
Talk about fund, we're just talking about.
That that's without the two fifty, that's without the two fifty.
What's the single?
Um, single is eight forty-five.
Thank you. So maybe to answer your question or however, those are the rates where current, the county is currently paying is eight forty-five for single and eighteen twenty-five for family.
Eight forty-five compared to nine seventy-nine?
Yep.
Doesn't have the actual contribution to the fund, that's what the county is.
That's what the county is paying.
What was the eighteen one?
Eighteen twenty-five by the county, and a two fifty by the employee. So that would be the total contribution.
This is the total for next year, the twenty-four forty-eight.
And and we we don't have to set our rates at their suggested rates, right? We balance that based on the funds and.
Twenty-four forty-three.
I sense I'm stepping over some line here, and that's supposed to, so let's.
Well, it, no, it's just gonna be in that presentation with that spreadsheet, it kind of helps that a little bit. Show us what our fund balance is, what the expenses are, and outlines it pretty well.
Yeah, and the rates that I'm presenting are just suggested. What the county does with them is up to you guys.
Were they raised last year?
Well, I suggest we make it four hundred dollars, and you guys carry the rest.
I don't think Walmart will do that.
Yeah, yeah, we're not gonna have, we're not gonna have any insurance.
Yeah.
So there's more than just suggestions here.
Well, it's a suggested funding, so that when we send you a bill for your claims, you can pay it.
Okay. Perfect.
All right, I will get all of that, all those items as soon as possible.
Carter, did you have any questions? Are you there online?
Yeah, I'm here. No, I I was following the conversation. That sounds good.
Perfect, just wanted to check in.
Sounds good. All right.
All right.
Anything further?
Thanks for coming up.
Oh, I had a question. I do count.
The benchmark, so benchmark plans, is there a distinction between public and private organizations, and how those are structured? So you just look at the public side?
Yep, we break that up.
Okay.
Yep, good question, though.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Sorry, I have my back to you, can you see me? I always have my back to you. What's up with that? Okay, very good. Thank you again. I do appreciate it.
Yeah.
And, I don't know, looks like maybe I'll see you in a week.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you, Carter.
Okay, are we, do you have ten million more or something?
We have Carissa and Phil here, so that's between you guys and me.
We'll be talking self-insurance after lunch as a.
Carissa needs to go now.
You need to go right now, then?
I have, well, I'm scheduled at forty-five, I have meeting.
We can extend what time we leave, right? I mean, I don't carry your weight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, Bill, if you're okay with going after lunch, we can jump to Carissa, since she's got meetings afternoon. And then, what, what time do we think of this afternoon?
We want, we have somebody at one, and and he's bringing his commission with, so he's scheduled that set in stone for one.
Okay, I gotta go home and pack.
Okay, so one fifteen, I mean, cut into our self-insurance discussion a little bit.
But that's okay, we can, it's all right. Self-insurance, cut into his.
Yeah. Okay, one fifteen for you, Phil?
One fifteen?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. And Carissa, we are up to you.
So hers is under civil defense.
Sorry, it can be difficult, but I already made our discussion for lunch.
You're fine.
It's okay. That'd be flexible.
Yeah.
All right, whenever you are ready, if you wanna just kind of start with just some highlights and.
So the commission board met for a budget workshop over in December, came up and we went through each of our line items and set our cost, which you should see reflective in your sheets. Really lowered some line items, increased some just based off of usage and not knowing what some of that is. Regarding weather events and things that are out of our control, helps minimize having to do a budget or a amendment during the midst of a disaster, as we had seen last spring, we at least had funding there to support that. We removed a couple of line items, a radio expense, cert, some grants that I had wrote a couple of years ago or a year ago, those are no longer, and so those won't be in here as well. And I, line item that we did add in was utilities, and then staffed lead, which is also a line item that will be as new, due to the fact that I worked with the sheriff's office and the governor PD, with staffed lead training, and we get donations for the kids or things, supplies that we have, and so I'm housing that and managing those things.
So Carissa, what was the, yesterday, Carissa came up and we added added an amount, and that is not in your books yet. What was that line item?
Oh, that was nine hundred dollars, and that was on the education bill, per capita line item.
So page five.
Like your expenditure?
Yeah, educational and training, is that the one?
Okay.
Education and training, was that the one?
No, that would be. The second one to the bottom, the four, three, two, seventy cost line item.
Yeah, page five, second to the bottom, so we added.
Page five, second to the bottom?
We added nine hundred to that, so the top, it's nine hundred dollars there. You don't have anything in yours, but we did add that yesterday. I just have not.
Education.
Yeah, yeah. I just, yeah, I have, didn't change your sheets.
Looks like the budget's down quite a bit. Yes, it is.
Vehicle purchase.
Yeah, we did a vehicle purchase this year.
Okay, and that's why, because you have budget for it, makes sense?
Yeah.
And that was to help spend down your fund balance?
Yes.
Is that why you did that?
Yes. So as far as revenues, just the EMPG grant is, grant that we write almost every year, those funds are going down as well, so we're at estimated, this is just a guess of what it was, is twenty thousand eight hundred. Usually, it's less than what I estimate, so honestly, it doesn't come out until after the budget. And then the slayings revenues, it was basically instead of cost share with with other, like the hospital or EMS, and then that's money that come back in. And then other grants throughout the year, which I don't have anything coming up during, at this moment.
Is is that for the trust and agency funds? I'm assuming that's the amount the county gives, the one hundred and sixty-two seventy-three from non-department, right?
Yes.
Non-department, yeah.
Yes, so.
Why is the received year to date one twenty-six, and the budget is only thirty-one thousand? 'Cause it says up four hundred percent.
Well, so for this current fiscal year, it's because they originally only gave her part of what she asked for last year, and then in the fall, they gave her back the remaining amount.
Okay.
Um, and then this year, her amount's going from the one twenty-six oh eight four to the one sixty, so.
Okay.
So that's a little bit deceiving.
So it was amended for her to receive one twenty-six oh eight four, was why, okay.
Yes, yeah.
Place your tip.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, but so the amount is going up, just not quite, not four hundred and eight percent, but it is going from the one twenty-six to the one sixty.
Shouldn't, and I don't know, shouldn't that number in the amended, 'cause it was amended to the original, shouldn't that be different?
What what do you mean?
Uh, twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yeah, so we have, she has not done, so we did a transfer for that. So actually, the sheet that we would've printed yesterday would probably reflect that.
Okay.
So, um, so it would show that. So I'll print that and put it in your books.
Okay.
Is the city contribution going away?
Yes, the commission has chose to get away with it, per capita, and go to the county supplemental for this year. The twenty-nine C bill is backup for legislative. With that, they are hoping that they would add in where EMA can have their own tax lugging option. And so, once that bill gets introduced, and hopefully it'll make it through this year, then we'll be able to tax our own.
So that would be everyone's cities, people in the city, the ever, ever.
Just like EMS does.
Yes. Okay.
This line, I'm totally naive here, this line item where you were talking about the hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars, what's that paid for?
The program, the emergency management program.
You got it more specific.
And so, such as planning, training, doing plans for the county, plans for the, for Cassup County, exercising, training, writing grants, helping when there's a disaster, I.
Helping the, helping the sheriff, helping the police, helping the fire.
Helping the citizens of the county, helping the cities, helping fire department.
But this is training and stuff.
That's for the whole program.
How how do you know how much, are you, don't don't read anything into the question? How how do you know how much to, I see the history and all that, but how do you, how do you know who to train, what to train, how, are there are there requirements of training you have to do?
So for me, yes, I have to have so many exercises a year with my first responders, with the county first responders, I have to have so many trainings.
Because?
Because that's, I use the EMPG grant dollars, since I write for that grant, which gives us that twenty thousand, whatever, eight hundred dollars, that requirement is, I must.
And who's giving you those?
That comes from the Homeland Security, from the state, which they get from the federal. And not only that, it's not just what I have to do, but like, so like the hospital or the long-term care facilities, they have requirements that are that are placed on them that have to have training, and so they reach out, they have to have their partners. So it's emergency management and law enforcement and fire and so forth.
Humor me, don't read again, don't read again. Do we have to have emergency management? There's somebody out there that says we must have.
Yeah, it's an Iowa code.
And how long is, how long has this been, it exists?
It's been for quite a long time. Code, I guess I can tell you, I'm back, but civil defense be back when Jim Kelly was here, that's been years ago.
Thirty years, at least.
Yeah. I couldn't give you an exact time, my apologies.
How long have you been doing it?
This, I'll be going on my fourth year.
Was there somebody between Jim Kelly and you?
Yes, yes.
Who was that?
Dick Tenny.
Okay, all right.
I don't have any other questions. This is a silly question, but so with her commission meeting in December, which I guess I'm on that, so that's why I'm asking this. With the commission usually meeting in December to set your budget, is this almost a moot point? I mean, because obviously, it's probably getting published, or almost.
It is published.
Yeah, so this, like, everything's kind of set by your commission?
Mm-hmm.
And then, okay, and then basically, you know, it's our, correct me if I'm speaking correctly, it's our duty or requirement by code to fund this?
Yep, by twenty-nine, twenty-nine C point one seven.
Twenty-nine C point one seven, okay. Okay, that's all I want, or make sure I understood correctly. Okay. I don't have anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Carissa.
Thank you.
Anything, anybody had anything else to discuss about for now, or are you guys ready to go to lunch?